So on your phone, Carol, when's the last time you got an email? Like, did you get that just on your phone?
Yeah. Right, and I responded, I got that.
So, when I start YouTube, it sometimes it doesn't default, but it's muted, so I thought that.
Well, I guess I can be on my phone.
Did you try, try loading, uh, do you have Zoom on your laptop?
Yeah. That's what I'm trying.
Just giving the meeting number and logging in that way? Did you try that?
Okay, alright, I'll try that and see, but meanwhile, meanwhile, I'll keep my phone on it, you know, so you could take attendance and stuff.
Has the meeting started?
No, it has not. I'm trying to get Carol for the link to get in.
Okay, hi Mayor, it's Gordon Minor, I thought I would just appear long enough to introduce myself and then, and then if you want to excuse me, you can.
We can do that, Gordon, so I'll, uh, well, soon as it gets started, we'll get that taken care of. Alright, Carol, it should be in your inbox.
Okay, thanks. Now.
Am I in or no?
I think.
I don't know. Nope, I don't think so, I think I got locked out here, so, let me reconnect. You weren't? I know, I was there when he was trying to get this for Carol. Operator, Karen.
It says it's trying, it says it's trying to open it. Okay, looks like it's gonna connect.
Good.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, there she is, she used to be admitted.
Okay, great.
Yeah, coming in there.
Recording in progress.
You need to hang up your phone now, Carol.
Okay, okay, I will turn off the phone.
Okay. Sorry for the delay, good evening. This is a hideout Utah, uh, town council regular meeting and public hearings. It is July 11th, 2024. The meeting is both electronic and in person in the town hall. Uh, I'm going to call the, um, meeting to order, and we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. For those of us in the room, anyway. The pledge of allegiance to the by, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Let's do the roll. Bob Nadelberg.
Here.
Jonathan Gunn.
Here.
Ralph Severini.
Here.
Carol Hazelton.
Here.
Chris Fire.
I am here.
Okay, thank you. So, the full council, uh, and quorum, so, there we go. Uh, so, on the phone tonight is Gordon Meyer, Gordon is our new town engineer. Uh, he's been here for roughly a month now.
Recording.
Was it not recorded?
No, it was. I think probably got it.
Um, sorry, we have another technical issue, anyway, uh, Gordon is on the phone, uh, or on Zoom. Uh, yeah, so he's been here about a month, he's already making a great, great big difference, and I appreciate that very much. Um, getting up to speed, uh, working through a number of issues and bringing, uh, a really, uh, improved level of, uh, technical know-how and discipline to, to our engineering process, so, glad to have you, Gordon, council. Uh, I think, I can't see from here, is that Gordon on the picture? Yeah, he's here, okay, so that's Gordon, folks, if you see him. Um, he spends a fair bit of time here right now, he's doing a ton of research with us. Um, and we're excited to have him, so, uh, Gordon, why don't you just do like two minutes on your background?
Sure, um, I have about twenty years of experience, uh, working the public sector for various municipalities as, in, in engineering roles, development engineer, senior engineer, city engineer, and, uh, almost that, uh, same amount of experience in the private sector, um, working as, as a consultant. Um, I retired, uh, from the, the state retirement system, uh, in, in, uh, December, and, uh, returned to Hanson Allen and Loose, that was a firm I worked for, uh, many years ago. And, uh, we noticed the solicitation for hideout, and were pleased to, to, uh, make that application and, and very pleased to be selected by the city. Obviously, there's a lot of stuff happening in, in hideout, and, and, uh, hopefully I've hit the ground running. Uh, just today, I got the, the, uh, advertisement for bids out for the street maintenance project, and, uh, got a first draft of, uh, of, uh, standard specifications manual to the staff, that still needs some work, but, uh, doing a lot of work and, and enjoying being involved.
Great, thank you, Gordon. So, folks, now you know what he looks like, um, if you're in the office or around town and see Gordon, please make yourself known to him. Um, he's a, he's, he's a key member of the team. Thanks, Gordon, for, for dialing in, appreciate it.
Thank you, um, and unless there are questions, I see somebody's hand there, but unless there are questions, I'm, um, you know, I'm gonna save the, save the town money and not, not linger.
Yeah. Uh, I, I'm not taking public input on this, uh, for those who are raising hands, we're just introducing the general, so.
Okay, uh, if, uh, if there are no questions for me, I'm, I'm gonna log off.
Okay, thanks, Gordon.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, next item is, uh, town council meeting draft, uh, minutes draft of May 9th, 2024. Um, this is relatively recent, since, uh, two months ago, so it should be fresh in most folks' minds. Uh, it was a busy meeting, what went on, um, and I think I went through them, and, um, I think Alicia did an excellent job as usual in capturing what went on in the session, so I don't have any comments from my pre, for the preview of this, of the minutes, but I'll open it to council to see if anybody has questions or comments. Okay. Not even Carol? Alright, well, Alicia, there you go, first, uh, one in a while where nobody had any additional feedback, so, in which case, um, we would appreciate it, uh, I would appreciate if someone would, uh, motion to accept the minutes of May 9th, 2024, town council meeting.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Carol. I took Bob. I think he went first. Alright, uh, Jonathan?
Yes.
Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
And Bob?
Yes.
Thank you. Alright, um, next item is any items in the minutes that, um, that could, that come up as a follow-up, I didn't catch any in there, I mean, there was some, there's some work going on with, uh, with the developers in Deer Springs and getting the final language together on the MDA, but that part of the process will be approved, so, I don't, I didn't see anything else in there, but, again, anybody have any questions on any of the items in the minutes?
Um, this is Carol, I did. Um, it was, it was just, um, it was about the discussion about the, um, nightly rentals, and we had requested that fifty thousand dollars in front, in funds and the water rights, um, you know, be put, um, be transferred, and I remember Mr. Brockbank saying that, um, they would be transferred in thirty days. Um, were they transferred?
Paul, you wanna jump in on that?
Yeah, so we, we've been working with them, you know, and there were some things that took a little bit longer on our end, so, it's been, we, it's gonna be thirty days within executing the agreement, which is imminent. Uh, they've been actually pushing us to get it done, so, we, we had to work out some housekeeping in terms of where it would go, where the water would go and whatnot. So, um, you, so that's the answer.
So, yeah, so Carol, they're, they're very willing, they've been after us, we've had to sort out, as Polly said, we've had to sort out a few things on our side. Um, couple rewrites on the language, and I think at this point, we're pretty close to signing it and getting it done.
Okay, I, I had a couple other questions too, I was just curious as to which management company they're using, and if we do have people in place to oversee the regulations, and if the good neighbor brochure has been printed and handed out to the owners?
Um, well, to my knowledge, Polly, they haven't, Polly, sorry, Carol and council, they haven't, uh, identified the, um, the, the, the management companies yet. Um, so we'll get that from them. Uh, the, you said three things, so that was one, the brochure.
Right, one is, who is overseeing that the regulations are being adhered to? I, I'm asking this on behalf of some kind of, of some of the people who live there.
Yeah. So, um, so I don't know that, we'll, we'll, uh, reach out to, to Holmes and find out who they've selected. So if you put that, I'll show you as a action, um, as far as, um, our being able to administer it, uh, we have to sit, once those companies are selected, we'll sit down with them and take them through our requirements, the reporting that we expect to see, et cetera. Um, and so that will come through the, through the management company. Uh, I think you asked a really good question, Carol, on the oversight part, I, you know, I, I, we have to do some work on that, um, and I'll sit down with Jan and we'll figure out who on the staff is gonna be helping to figure out, are they being, are we getting all the right information? And we already believe we're not getting everything we need from the pre-existing nightly rentals. So we're gonna have to put some resources on that, and I'll work with Jan to figure out how we're gonna do that.
Hey, Mayor, um, just a comment on that. I mean, we're talking about nightly rentals in phases that haven't been started yet, right? So, what is the, you know, realistic-ish timeline when we would actually need this, because, Carol, these phases aren't started yet, they're, they're still building two A, right, as if I got that right?
Right, but there is one phase where there are nightly rentals.
Yeah, but we can't, yes, but I don't, I thought we left it that. You know, that, there's already, um, the thing that we, uh, the nightly rental arrangement that we made with the future phases of Deer Springs is different than the nightly rental arrangement that's currently in place with the, with the existing and, you know, occupied phase one, so, right, uh, maybe Polly, you can help us understand? Can we, like, retroactively change the rules for them? I thought we couldn't, I thought they.
No, so, the, the nightly rentals are, so the prior ones are regulated both by our town code. We have ordinances related to administration of those few nightly rentals. And, um, we also have, um, we also have, um, you know, the requirements on the plats, but it is all actually quite similar. So the question of enforcement will apply to everyone, the requirement to have, you know, a management company applies to everyone, I think the only difference is this one, we require that they had two choices. Um, but it's all very similar, so we can work with Alicia. I, I work with nightly rentals in a lot of other of my municipalities, and there are some enforcement, um, programs you can work with, uh, to help where, and also we can, you know, set up a neighbor complaint line or something like that, and some of those apps have that. So if the ones that are existing are creating problems, we can work on figuring out a way to a, address that.
Okay, thank you.
Good work.
So, wait, so Polly, that, so that's different from what I remember, uh, from the meeting, but are you saying that we can enhance enforcement in phase one, and that with, which is what Carol's asking for?
Yeah, we can, oops, we can, um, I mean, enhance, I guess it depends on what we wanna do, but we can, we have an ordinance on our books related to short-term rentals, so, I guess it would be the question of how would you wanna enhance it? And if you like, we could put this on the next agenda as just a overview of the nightly rental program and how we'll administer it, might need two months to really get something together, but, uh, we could do something in the near future.
That would be great, Carol, would that be what you're looking for too?
Right, that would be great, and as I said, I know a couple of people who are going to be moving in, um, into phase, I think it's two A, and, you know, they had some concerns, so I'm just kind of, um, asking some of those questions.
Good, good, Carol, thank you. Yeah, and good idea, Polly, let's, let's, let's do it for, um, September. And we'll get some work done on that, and that, by that time, I'm sure that Holmes will have identified its partners and all that kind of stuff, so we can have all that ready for review.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, thanks for bringing that up.
Mayor, I had one item, um, yeah, it was on page, uh, it was really just the follow-up is on page seven, or four of fourteen lines, twenty-two through twenty-eight. Um, uh, ultimately, council agreed on the importance, importance of effective communication enforcement. They concluded by discussing the progress of training staff members in code enforcement tasks, so, I see that as kind of an action item going forward, any, um, any follow-ups on that?
We, um, you know, Dan's team is the primary, um, source code enforcement for us. Um, we, as I mentioned last time, we're still working on that new software. It's, uh, I think, I've been away for a couple weeks and I've missed Dan, so I'm not sure if it's been, run the test yet or not, but they were supposed to be running the test, um, which will make their job easier. Um, and, you know, we've, uh, we've, we've got in the preliminary budget, you know, an additional headcount for his team. Uh, once we approve that budget, we'll be looking to, we've identified a candidate, and we'll be looking to bring that person in, uh, if the budget's approved, so, uh, that'll give us another, uh, another person in Dan's team that, uh, can be out there and, and doing the follow-up, so with that additional resource, we'll be well-staffed for, uh, the non, um, snow season anyway, to have enough people, uh, uh, sliding schedule, in other words, we'll, we'll work. We're working with Dan to put the guys on hopefully six days, um, and, you know, rotate those days so that some folks work, um, you know, Monday through Friday, some folks work Tuesday through Saturday, or however, kind of thing, so we've got coverage most days of the week, um, for the, for the fireworks guys. And that's kind of where we are, Ralph, so we're, we're still not fully there with both the software tool and the staffing, but we're, we're moving forward.
Okay, thanks, Mayor, that was a good description, maybe we can, maybe in two or three months, we can say, was it successful, and, you know, um, we can get a readout on that a little bit further.
Well, one of the things that the software will do is, um, stats. So we can have much easier way to know, you know, how many citations were issued, how many repeats, all that kind of stuff, so, that'll be very useful for us to see if we're, um, making progress with, with the, with the coverage of the guys, and also with, uh, making decisions about, uh, which contractors or, um, people who are, whether they be contractors or whatever, but the people who were cited, we have repeat offenders, then we can start cranking up, well, our, our, um, efforts with them to ensure that they understand the need to comply. I'm actually looking forward to seeing those numbers.
Yeah, me too, given, given the numbers on the, um, certainly given some of the complaints around the, some of the contractors and issues that we've had over the past, well, year probably.
And, and I guess, yeah, Chris, you, you were here, I was not, but I had not seen anything in my email about, uh, flagrant issues with fireworks on the fourth, but I don't know, I do know the guys were around, but.
No, I can tell you about that, just from being here, you know, because I have a dog who hates loud noises, so, very sensitive. So, uh, yeah, there were, there were a couple of pop-up pups, uh, at some point during the, you know, uh, early-ish, they did not last long, and then at midnight, a couple more pop-up pups, and that was it. It was remarkably tranquil here, uh, at least from where I can hear or see fireworks. So I don't know, Carol, if you had, if you were here and had a different experience looking down at the state park, but I thought whatever code enforcement, uh, was happening with Wasatch County, it seemed to be working.
Um, I, I thought it was really quiet. So, mu- much better than last year.
Much better than last year, so yes, whatever we did this year, let's do it again next year.
Right.
I had a different experience, Chris, that was slightly up my way, and I actually called the county, um, because it didn't stop for like, um, at least twenty minutes. And I, you know, finally, I just said, I think I'll call, and I got a response immediately, and they said there were some, uh, enforcement officials up this way investigating. I couldn't really tell whether it was on hideout property, or it was on, you know, uh, public land, or even on two A, um, but it was loud enough in my neck of the woods that, um, you know, it, it was disturbing. It wasn't even disturbing, I mean, it was more like, gee, I'm wondering, you know, if anything will result in this in a bad way, meaning a fire, and that was my biggest concern, obviously. So, um, but in any case, I, you know, our county did respond, and they said they were, definitely had some people up here looking into it. I don't know what that report was, but, um, I never followed up after.
It'll be, it'll be in our blotter, um, in their report to us, um, Two Hay did have fireworks. Um, they did send us a letter apologizing for not notifying us in advance, um, they're a private community and in the county, uh, not subject to our code. Uh-huh. But they're nearby, and so we heard them, uh, and there were some folks, uh, raising some questions about that, but, uh, you know, that was outside the bounds of hideout, and and apparently the county, um, as a whole, did not deny them the, the, the right to you to have a fireworks display, so.
Well, that must have been it, uh, Mayor, so, uh, because I'm right there, and, uh, it's fun, it's funny, I don't think the lady I talked to on the, who answered the call said exactly that, like, but in any case, that's, that was most likely it, because it sounded like a real fireworks display.
We have not known, but apparently, uh, they were contacted, because we did get a letter explaining the circumstances and their promise to do better and making us aware, um, next season, so that we don't get surprised.
They told me that every July 2nd, they do that, and it's part of their celebration for opening Two Hay. And, so you guys are probably aware of that, but, you know, there were some residents that did not know that, so, I will make sure that I send a letter, or not a letter, but a notification out to try to mitigate some of those complaints. Just to make people aware.
Well, I want to, I want to say, you know, well, once we get to the update on fundraising for the temporary fire station, I want to say that I think we've entered a new era of cooperation with Two Hay, and, um, and I would hope that, you know, will continue, and that next year, you know, there'll be more transparency, they'll alert us in time so we can let people know if they're, you know, that they do have this fireworks display, if they're sensitive to it, maybe they cannot be home during that time or something, go, we can, you know, get, get the word out ahead of time for hideout residents who may be within hearing or viewing distance of the Two Hay fireworks for next year, um, both to maybe have your block party so you can watch them, or get the heck out of there with, uh, if you don't wanna, wanna be around. So, um, I think we should try to continue to leverage the inroads we've made with Two Hay, uh, with Jonathan and Jan, uh, lately, to, to try to, you know, keep that dialogue going.
Great, Chris, thank you.
And one thing, sorry, I turned on my camera just to mention, I do know that in Salt Lake County, UFA has issued a statewide level-one, um, restrictions. So, I'll keep my eye on that, and it's possible that we, if that happens in Wasatch County, um, we'll, we may wanna match it, that's what we've done in the past.
Thanks, Paul, yeah, this heat wave is not, not conducive to, uh, low fire risk, unfortunately.
Well, you know what, it, as I have a question, and I don't want to belabor just fireworks here, but, um, if they're gonna do something next year, or if anyone does anything, are they required to have a fire truck, uh, nearby, or notified to be on, on call in, in the event of an issue? Is that kind of, and it would actually benefit, obviously, in that case with, um, hopefully by then, a new fire station?
I, I don't know, Ralph, that's a good question, we can check with Wasatch Fire and see, because I, in theory, uh, you know, major fireworks, you know, organized fireworks displays require. Organized fireworks displays require permit and notification, but the fact that you can stop at the. At the corner in in Heber and buy all you want to do in your backyard, obviously, that's a little harder to control, but. So I'll be, it's a good question. Be interesting to see how they deal with the fact that the state allows and sells fireworks for individual use. Um, and and what size or quantity would require. Um, you know, some other permitting if if it if it's required at all. I mean, good question. Kind of interesting.
Hey, if I could jump in here, uh I wouldn't worry about the Two Hay fireworks. They do it on a golf course. Next to the driving range, next to the water hazard. Um, the grass is green, there's nothing dry, there's nothing combustible. Um, we were fortunate enough to get an invite. I didn't recall seeing a fire truck. In my opinion, I don't think it's a fire hazard and and worth worrying about. It was a nice show.
Well, yeah, we'll we'll learn about it. I'm sure that they're they're responsible and they're they have property values they care about as well, so. All right, let's move on. We can. Um, and move to public input. And this is uh. So there's a few hands up, so let's start with Robert Green. You should be able to speak now, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Can you hear me? Is this good?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Excellent. All right, I'm Robert Green. I live on Longview, just down the street from the town hall. And I wanted to bring up the issue of the state of the parking lot that we have to drive through to get to our mail. Um, so as you are hopefully aware, a number of us get our mail just uh next to the town hall. And in order to actually get to the mail, we have to turn around through the parking lot, which is just. Riddled with potholes and pavement that is disintegrating, so large clumps of pavement. It's a hazard, it's a risk, and um this is true during. The summer when you can see the potholes, during the winter when you can't, and I would just like to. Hope that the town was able to do something about this one way or the other.
I would tell you, sir, that the uh mailboxes are on HOA land, they're not on uh public land. That's that's HOA owned property. They are responsible for the um paving in that area. So I would suggest a letter to the um to the HOA raising your concerns. We cannot um go in there and and patch that um because it's private property. We don't have permission to do that.
So then I should ask the post office to move the mailboxes to lanes?
No, we should ask the HOA who who provide the the land and the location for the mailboxes to. Uh, improve the situation. As as residents, we should be asking our HOA to fix that up.
Okay, I will go that route and. Let you guys know how I do.
Hey, Mayor, Mayor, can I comment since uh Mr. Green brought this up? It is inordinately difficult to work with the Community Preservation HOA um to get anything done. I mean. I don't really, I know that's a terrible answer, Robert, uh. Because it feels like, you know, we're just deflecting, but the the truth is. We don't control that piece of property. It's up to the HOAs. I'm sorry, it's up to the developers to install the mailboxes. I can tell you when I moved in nine years ago, I didn't have a mailbox for four months, because they did not. Uh, have one, have mailboxes. They had one cluster box there, but it was full. So they finally installed a second cluster box, but only after I had to broker the relationship between. Someone, and I can't even remember who it was with the post and with the post office, and it finally happened, so I didn't have to go to Canvas. Every couple of days and pick up my mail that was accumulating there. Very frustrating. I don't know how we improve that relationship. I can tell you. I do not get notices when there are HOA meetings. I think the annual meeting they're required. To inform all members, the HOA. Of the annual meeting, but I can tell you, they never tell me. Uh, there's a website, I guess you can go out there and proactively see what's going on, but. It's very, very frustrating and nobody likes it. So uh. I do, you know, want to express my regrets that we can't do anything about it. Because if we could at a town level, we would, we would fix those potholes, we'd make sure. That there was an appropriate place for the mailboxes, that people could access them, that we're not having this. Bad situation continued, but unfortunately, from the town perspective. We just, we can't, we can't fix it. So it's going to be community members and members of the HOA to put pressure uh on Community Preservation Association. That's the HOA. Uh, to make these changes.
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't mean to be, no, we do not mean to be dismissive. If we could fix it, we would.
No, I understand. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Damian Titano, let's hear from you.
Uh, good evening. You hear me?
We can, sir.
Thank you. Um, obviously a little disappointed that I didn't get to talk to Gordon when he was online. I saw the announcement. Um, but there was no way to uh contact him that was written on that announcement, so I guess I'm just asking. How do we best communicate with him? And and I was, I guess, a little disappointed. I thought or misunderstood. That he was going to be a staff um versus a consultant, but obviously he has he's a consultant, so. Is he, does he have office hours at the town hall? How how do we best work with him?
Uh, he does have, I mean, he has, he's not here every day. Uh, he's here when, you know, I forget what day of the week. He comes regularly, once or twice a week, and then for key inspections and things like that. Um.
Does he have a phone number and email?
Getting that for you right now.
Oh, okay. Well, if that could just be put onto the to the town website under administration, that would be great.
Yeah, at least you can take care of that. I have issued a note with his uh with his information. But uh we'll we'll get it in the record right now.
Okay, and then um obviously uh being a part of Golden Eagle. Um, I'm curious if there's any been any improvements in that situation uh that you can share with us?
Um, Polly, you want to take that?
Yeah, I'll just say that um the engineers did finally meet, and I think that progressed things along. And we expect there to be some, you know, no, there haven't been any. No, as we've always said, um COs will be granted. Based on the standard in the MDA, which is substantial completion. No COs have been denied. Um, and so we're working towards um. A finding and we'll let you know as soon as we have something.
We we believe the engineers are aligned on what needs to be done, and we're just waiting to have that in writing from. From that, from all sides, so we can let everybody know that what what's gonna happen and all that good stuff.
Great, you, that's public document, so you'll share it once it's it's agreed upon? Thank you very much.
So Mayor and and Polly, in that document, so substantial completion will be defined and then agreed upon between the two engineers? Is that what we're expecting?
Yeah, we've been looking towards this. I'd rather, we'll, when we have something, we'll, we will. Get on the website.
Okay, great. I'm I'm glad that there's some progress. That is uh good news.
Uh, and just. So Damian, for your information, um Gordon's phone number is four three five. Three one five two two five one. And uh his email is G minor, M I N E R, at H A L engineers dot com.
Okay, so we contacted him through his company, not not, he doesn't have a hideout?
That phone number is a hideout phone number.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, his email is, he uses the the company uh mailbox for his email, but his the phone number, the four three five number is. Is a hideout phone number for him.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I make a comment about the mailboxes? I think we have an agreement that mailboxes with hideoututah.gov are issued for. Employees of the town as well as elected officials and. Uh, the members of the planning commission, and I think that's that's it. Is that that correct? Everyone else, whoever, anybody who's a contractor uh for hideout. They would use their business mailbox from who, whatever, whatever the business mailbox is, so. So Thomas uses his.
Right, we're working on that. We have one outstanding, you know, but we're we're getting that.
But just so everyone knows, that's.
Yeah, that's the.
What we're implementing in the town, so um so so don't be surprised if you're reaching out to a resource you think. Like, for example, um. Uh, Gordon, you know, we, it would, it would be our standard practice now for to reach him on his. Hal, H A L um mailbox, and and he doesn't, he would not have a hideoututah.gov. An email address.
Thanks for clarifying that, Chris, yeah. Okay. I don't see any other hands up, and so I'm going to close public input. And move to the item six, which is a continued public hearing. Sorry, continued public hearing for discussion and possible approval for amendments to hideout municipal code. Uh, section ten point oh eight, including but not limited to placement of hot tubs. As in ten point oh eight oh eight dot one five. And pull that up, and I'm gonna make it a little bigger, and we'll let Thomas tell us how we're progressing. Hello, Thomas.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, Council. All right, I will walk you through this. I know that we've seen this a couple of times uh as we. As is often typical with code language, it uh it does come down to the exact wording and. Uh, initially, when the planning commission and the council approved a series of code revisions and updates. In late February, we came back to you last month with a a couple of recommended revisions to make sure that. The language was clear, that it did not disallow hot tubs on front decks. Uh, it does disallow them in front yards, but it does not disallow them on front decks that are equipped for hot tubs in many of the houses. In um some of the communities up in Lakeview, Deer Waters, Deer Springs. Do have houses with a front hot tub deck designed into them, and so we wanted to clarify that those were not disallowed hot tubs. So the language we came back with last week uh included uh. Specific language that noted that if it were on an upper story deck or balcony integral to the building's architecture, it would be permitted. We went through some additional uh cleanup language uh relative to setbacks, and all of that was generally agreed upon. Or generally, um, I think, accepted and uh agreed upon at the last meeting, but one issue, a couple of issues did come up. And you could see there on the uh Ju- June thirteenth meeting um was the. Kind of a description of structural integrity and just confirming that that language was in there, um noting that a. Uh, building permit should be required for hot tubs and that um. We would have language in there relative to hot tubs that were potentially located in limited common area or common area, and so. I coordinated with um Kathleen, and you'll see um some new language right there at the bottom. A that a building permit must be obtained for hot tub swim spas and swimming pools. That's pretty common throughout the Wasatch back. Mostly because of their electrical and plumbing components. Um, they are considered structures as they are attached to the ground. Hence the um setback requirements that we have incorporated in here. You'll also see on the second to the last line of B number one and built to structural standards just. To support the proposed hot tub, just again clarifying that, that language is uh much more detailed in the IBC. The International Building Code that the town follows for structural standards, but we just noted that in here um kind of as a backup. It's always good to kind of uh uh stated a second time in this code as well as in the building code. So that language was added. If you don't mind scrolling down just a little bit more, Mayor, to two A and two B. This language was added to note that if an HOA does allow a hot tub. Um, or a property owner has a zero lot line, uh setback that a hot tub may be located. Up to the rear or side yard lot line or in the limited common area lot line. Um, subject to a minimum ten foot setback from any adjacent residential unit or structure. We did have some input thoughts and discussions since this report went out, actually, and. While that isn't intended to say to to mean any adjacent. Nearby residential unit or structure, it's not that clear. We don't want um there to be any confusion that it could be the adjacent structure. That you share a wall with, because these are zero lot line. We're addressing zero lot line units here, which means you share a a common wall. So uh I'm recommending that that last line read, subject to a minimum ten foot setback. From any adjacent and distinct freestanding parentheses. E.G. not connected residential unit or structure. We are recommending that because it's not intended to say. That it has to be ten feet from the unit to which you are attached or share a wall with. Um, so that is cleanup language. B is essentially the same thing as A, but it notes that. Uh, if an HOA allows you to locate a hot tub in their common area. That it also must be located a minimum ten feet setback from any adjacent and distinct. Freestanding, E.G. not connected residential unit or structure, recommending adding that language.
Thomas, why would these two, two, the primary two there? That the minimum five, five foot, and then everything else would go into ten foot. I'm a little confused by that.
That, keep in mind, number two is setback, so it's just maintaining the setback theoretically. Most units have a five to ten foot setback for their structure, the adjacent property, because these are not zero lot lines. Also has a five to ten foot setback requirement, so you can have two fives. Plus ten from structure to structure.
Okay, I got you now, so so A and B is really uh our zero lot line.
That's correct.
Language, okay.
Zero lot lines, limited common and common area, place which is land that has no setback distinction. So we had to incorporate A and B and note distance from um adjacent distinct freestanding structures. So that somebody doesn't put a hot tub in their backyard, but it may be a couple of feet from a neighbor's actual wall. We didn't want that either, so I think we've clarified that with the the added language.
Thank you.
And that was, th- those were the only um added uh pieces of code language. Uh, since you saw that last month, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, I I I just want to make sure I I fully understand this. Thomas, thank you for all of your effort on this. And I just want to make sure I'm a hundred percent clear, because this was Mr. Eisenfeld's concern last time. In the case of a twin home where there may be a thin, meaning less than a one foot wide wall. Separating the two limited common areas. Um, there still can be a hot tub on either or both of those limited common areas. Um, because the ten foot setback would apply to a non-attached. um, because the ten foot setback would apply to a non-attached structure. Do I, I fully understand that?
That's correct. Because now we clarified, we, we, we intended with adjacent structure to mean adjacent nearby structure, but I don't think that's terribly clear. So I think with the distinct freestanding, not connected, language, it should make that clear. So to answer your question, uh, they would be allowed to have a hot tub in their backyard, that would be, that could be within ten feet of your neighbor's unit, because you share a wall.
Okay, terrific. That's, that's why I need to make sure. So that is both the intent of the language and, and the purpose then.
Correct.
Yeah, so basically.
Thank you.
If we had a twin home, and both, both folks wanted to put a hot tub on their deck or patio, uh, they could do that. Even though they wouldn't meet the primary, uh, setback requirements, just because it's a twin home, there's nowhere else to put it.
That's right.
Exactly, exactly. Terrific, thank you.
Space is limited there, or I should say, uh, buildable, uh, structure space is limited, yeah.
Any other questions for Thomas? So Thomas, is the, uh, new language here? There it is, yes.
It is, yes. It's at the bottom of this ordinance, yes. And, oh, but the new language is not on that one, uh, Mayor, um. But I will, I will send that over to Alicia so she can incorporate it, which is for two A and B, uh, and distinct freestanding, E G, not connected before residential unit or structure last line. I'll send that over to Alicia right now.
So if there are no questions, I'd like to see if someone's willing to make a motion to, adopt an ordinance amending chapter ten point oh eight, uh, on setbacks related to hot tubs and the hideout municipal code, uh, per the language discussed tonight.
I'll make the motion, um, specifically including Thomas's, uh, verbal revisions this evening.
Hey Phil, I, I would second that. Just one quick question, though. Um, the building permit required for the hot tubs, is, is there gonna be any type of fee involved with that?
Good question, Bob.
I don't think that Kathleen and I discussed a fee for that. I think the idea was to kind of encourage people to get the building permit. It's really for their protection and safety, and to make sure they meet zoning and don't have to move, um, a hot tub later down the road, because that can be costly. So, we, we could discuss that, but we, when I discussed with Kathleen, we did not discuss a fee.
Well, I would, I would say we should, for personal, hot tub personal use, we should probably waive it.
I, I, I agree. Um, if, maybe we should add some language. I don't know if this is overkill saying that there's not gonna be a fee involved with that.
Uh, that would be on a fee schedule, Bob, um, not, not on the actual ordinance. But I think for people to actually try and follow what we, what we're trying to do tonight, I think having no fee makes it a lot easier.
Yeah.
Okay, because if you, you know, we're basically saying, we want you to do this, as Thomas just said, for your own safety, and make sure that everything's right the first time, and there's no charge for that. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, also.
Jan, do you have any thoughts around that? Is she here? Yes, I don't know. Yeah, she's here.
Uh, Mayor, what's the, what's the expense associated with, if somebody, uh, needs a permit for a hot tub?
It's a little bit of a minute, I think, time, that's all. It's pretty minor.
It's pretty minor, some, do you send someone out from the town to, with a, with a tape measure, or what, or how, how do we do that? For the permitting process? Or is it just administrative time to create the permit? What, what are we doing?
I guess, Thomas, we would probably want to lay out with it, huh?
I think typically what is done in most communities is they bring in a, a, a layout, they show the dimensions, um, and I think that, you know, generally, they, they sign the affidavit for the building permit, noting that they'll, uh, certainly use, the appropriate licensed owners and, um, institutions to connect it.
Okay, so that, so then, um, so we just review their documentation and their attestation that they're gonna, you know, use professional install, installers, et cetera, or whatever. And then, so it's really just administrative work. Nobody has to go to a site.
If it's part of, if it's part of a building, um, that is actually going up, the inspectors may go out and look at it, and just like they, you know, check off quick measurements for side walls and, uh, front and rear setbacks, they may, they may, uh, tag that as well, just to make sure that it meets the setbacks. But if it's, uh, after the fact, um, it's really administrative. If somebody calls in, of course, then we would go in and check it out. But other than that, it's administrative.
I'm just trying to figure out what kind of costs we would eat, when I say the town would eat, uh, if we were to waive fees for hot tub permits. That's all. I just want to, again, be fiscally responsible, because you know, not everybody wants a hot tub, and, the town is proposing to eat those costs, and where do we get our money from, from taxes? So, I just want to make sure that we know it's not going to be a huge amount of cost for the town.
I think we would, we were talking about a building permit, Thomas, but I'm thinking, that not all sections of a building permit apply to a hot tub. So, do we do a different permit, for, uh, a hot tub, which also describes the requirements of somebody coming to get one?
Are you thinking, rather than call it a building permit, maybe it is a, uh, a special permit or something like that? And it's.
I'm just thinking, no, we probably need a, a page, page, a paragraph describing, to, in order to get your hot tub permit, you, or pool permit, you need, to bring a drawing with dimensions, the shape of the, of, you know, whatever. There has to be something to guide people, because this is not, these building permits are not being, um, done by, um, by the builders. They're being done by homeowners. So they don't necessarily know the process. So I think we need some kind of instruction sheet, um, associated.
I can send, I can create one and send it to Kathleen. We did, we, we do very similar things for landscaping, buoy, et cetera. So I can, I can create something for, Kathleen, so that, uh, it's easily understandable for a layperson.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. And Jan, what did you think about the commerce wa- leaving fees?
As soon as we have a process, we can estimate the, the labor, and of course, the fee, needs to be reasonably associated. So, we can do that after we get Thomas's input.
Okay, so I, I mean, I don't want it to be, I don't, I don't want it to be so, um, significant that people circumvent the process. I want to make it easy so people understand that, it's, it's a good thing to do, covers them, um, et cetera. So, let's, let's look at that, and we have to assign a fee with, that's fine, but let's, we'll work to make sure that that is, uh, not an inordinate, um, barrier for people to follow the process. Um, and so at least, I went to take a motion, but I have to stop that, because Alicia did remind me this is a public hearing, and so I need to open the floor for public input, um, before we get to a motion around these, um, ordinance or setbacks, for hot tubs and, in municipal. I don't see any hands. So I will close public input, and now look for a motion to, uh, amend chapter ten point oh eight setbacks related to hot tubs in a municipal code.
So moved, but incorporating Thomas's additional language in our discussion this evening.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Chris?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
And Jonathan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Here goes, I'm trying to top a page, I'm looking. Anyway, alright, so we did that. Now we're going to agenda item one, which is discussion and consideration of adopting ordinance, number to be assigned, amending section, of the hideout code updating, sections in chapter one point one six, purchasing. We did talk about this last time, and did some revisionist work, um, and I'm gonna let Polly, take us through this.
Okay, and, um, we didn't, you know, reading over the minutes, and I'm just seeing now, that there was really only one firm suggestion in terms of the language, and I knew that the amounts were kind of still being discussed. So, the ordinance you see in front of you is the same one that you saw last month, um, and, you know, it just seemed like you guys wanted to discuss it more. I don't know, Jan, if you had some input. Um, I gave you in the staff report, a lot of, um, other towns or, and cities, and what their levels are. I think, um, ours are a little, are, are pretty low, uh, but it's really a policy question of how you want to set them, and how you want to balance, uh, the ability to kind of enter into contracts quickly with the need for oversight.
Okay, so, last time, um, there was concern about, really, I think the biggest one being, um, the mayor's authorization. So, uh, and, because again, the other ones are, come to the mayor. Um, if they're, um, so I'm also trying to simplify the mayor's life a little bit, but, um, so if we look at our budget, it's a little over two million dollars. If, if the purchase approval for the mayor was two percent, that would be forty thousand dollars. So it's not, you know, we talked about it being a lot of money last time, but as, as in, in, um, comparison to the total budget, it's forty thousand dollars is two percent of the annual budget. So that's where I came out and saying, let's, let's drop the mayor to two percent, um, and see how you feel about that.
So I, I have three thoughts, um, on this ordinance. Um, I think I raised most of them before. The first one is, I, I think the mayor's raised some very good points on why we need to raise the limits. Um, you know, and so I, I'm in favor of doubling each of the existing limits, um, but subject to two provisos. Um, so my second issue is, I think, uh, what we should do is, uh, give the town administrator, uh, authority and responsibility, uh, for oversight over a certain level, say forty thousand, fifty thousand, pick a number, uh, and permit the administrator to, to, if, if he or she wants, to delegate that, to a, to a different, uh, individual, perhaps someone with a special interest or qualification on, on the council, or something like that. Somebody with both an interest and some relative qualification. So I'm, I, I, I like the idea of raising the limits. I think that's a good idea. Also like the idea of a, a little more, uh, oversight, uh, potential for the larger contracts. No one is really concerned about the small ones, but, I think that the bigger ones, uh, could use a, a little more, uh, scrutiny in some cases. So, tho- those are, those are my thoughts on.
Thank you, Jonathan. I think doubling is a good place to start, and you know that you mentioned it. It's less than what's on here, uh, recommended numbers, but at least it provides a bit of, bit of flex.
Yeah, and we can revisit those numbers in, you know, three months or six months, and if they don't alleviate the problems that you previously described, then, you know, perhaps we need to move them up again.
Yeah, I have a couple of comments, Mayor.
Right.
Um, one, yeah, I, I'm in general agreement that, you know, if this makes thing, if this makes, your life and, and the town's, uh, you know, processes more efficient, that's a good thing. Um, as to the limits, it could be fifty thousand or the forty thousand based upon the percent. But, the only problem with percentages is that may change up or down based upon what the budget is. So, uh, you know, maybe a fixed number is better, uh, rather than thinking of this in percentage terms, but not a bad way of thinking about it either. Uh, I don't think we've had any issues, um, you know, in terms of previous problems of purchasing or anything like that. So, um, I'm leaning to hear a little bit more from you, Phil, and from maybe Jan, as to how this would make it more efficient. And two, I never really figured out if we got the data as to what purchases would, would have fit, into this kind of tranche, you know, from where we are now to where, where we're raising it. To understand how many impacted purchases we've had over the past two years. I don't remember, seeing that data, maybe we had it, and maybe I missed it, but that would be useful as well, because are we doing something that, really isn't going to provide greater efficiency, because there, you know, there were only two items in that, in that tranche, so to speak. So those are the two areas, and generally, I'm in favor of what you guys recommend. You're, you're running the town. I think you have a much better feel than I do in terms of purchasing. So, but any comments on either one of those items?
So Ralph, in, in, uh, again, a lot of what we do is in the budget, um, road repairs, uh, you know, uh, the, the meter, the changes of meters to the new, uh, the new improved, uh, wireless recording meters and so forth. Uh, so those, you know, those kinds of things go in the budget, and so when the, purchases come through, because they're in the budget, um, unless I'm buying more than fifteen thousand dollars worth of something, um, um, then it doesn't, you know, it, it doesn't come back to the council. Um, if it's, and if it's an unscheduled, uh, or a, uh, contract, even if it's in the budget, but it's above my purchasing limits, we still have to come to you, um, if it's above my purchasing limit. So if we're gonna enter, we're gonna enter a contract with a, uh, a vendor that's twenty five thousand dollars, under cu- under the current rules, I'd have to come to you. And so we did come to you recently, so you're looking for examples. We came to you not too long ago, for the contract with H A L Engineers. Uh, we came to you prior to that with, uh, uh, the other engineering companies, uh, to get your agreement to, uh, support my, uh, signing, uh, work, work requests with the, uh, with Epic and Agora and Sunrise. Um, so, um, so that's the stuff that you see, coming through council, when it's gonna, when the annual spend for the, that contract is gonna exceed fifteen thousand, or projected to exceed fifteen thousand. You see those things in council. Um, so, um, in the wind, in the, in, in the winter of snow again, um, I authorized the purchase of a loader, to help clear the streets, uh, under emergency terms in our, in our code, and then came back to you for, uh, the approval on that loader. But, um, in that case, it was, you, we, the guys were being overwhelmed, the streets were getting clogged, and we needed to get equipment in quickly, and there's no council meeting scheduled, so I authorized. And there's no council meeting scheduled, so I authorized the purchase and then we reviewed it with you after the fact. And and the council did agree to the. Support the purchase. So uh, those are the kinds of things that you would see, Ralph. Um. Coming. To council.
So so Mayor, I I'm so glad you mentioned those specific examples, so. I don't hear a problem statement here. I mean. Do we have a problem with the current limits? It has you been hampered? Or has anybody on staff been hampered by the current limits? And then that's my first question. And the second is. Yeah, I did some quick numbers and such, and. Even if you look at Alta, Alta has twenty five thousand limits. And these are, these are examples that you provided us. I didn't come up with this, but. You know, if you do. Point seven percent of their annual budget, you come up with fourteen thousand, and ours is at fifteen thousand. So it feels like we're already in alignment. With Alta, for example. Um. If you're looking at what percentage of the budget. Is already allowed. So I do have an actual problem statement. Where this, these purchasing limits as they are now. Have hampered. The ability of the. Town staff or or the mayor to. Uh, to make to make purchases. So and I'm specifically talking about the limits that we're that are under consideration, and that's the part that you're showing. What's the problem statement with those with the current limits?
Sorry, the problem statement from my perspective is when it's a budgeted item. Um, and it exceeds my authorization. Um, even though we knew. Uh, the budget is greater than fifteen thousand dollars for that particular service, for example. Um. I have to come to you.
Are these limits goods or services or both?
It's both.
Well.
Okay, so like, for example, engineering, I'm glad you brought engineering up. I mean, now, don't we have engineering? We've exceeded our had exceeded our engineering budget? Um. Why wouldn't we want to have? Council oversight in in some in some ways to be able. To be able to talk about engineering, for example. I think we actually want that. We don't want to. You know. Just say, okay, do whatever you need to do as long as you stay in the budget, and then. When it doesn't stay in the budget, then then what? And then will the council then say, oh, why didn't we have better oversight over this since? Clearly went over budget, but. You know, we we weren't there. We weren't there to. At least to go through the. Process of having to come and explain. And, you know, make sense of it so that in a public way, so that. We all know where the money is going, or, you know, rather than where we find out. In hindsight, where it went when it's gone over. I'm just trying to understand. Go ahead, Jonathan.
I I would, I would suggest that if every con, if every contract has a not to exceed price. Um, in it. Um, then if we run into that situation now, it's. It's got to come back to the council, and so that might be one tool or one method. To to deal with, you know, the concerns that you have and and I have.
In in pre, in contracts that I've seen with services, if there's a not to exceed price, it's usually some kind of fixed price agreement. I, maybe it's possible to write one that is like hourly. For example, hourly, you know, it's a time of materials kind of contract, but. Can't exceed a threshold. Yeah, then then you're right, then that's. Would help. That would definitely help.
We have both. Of contracts in our. You know, in the town, some because. There are so many staff and roles which are. Um, worked on by contractors. Um. It's hard to put a not to exceed price, but of course you could have an upper threshold. I think that is what had the upper threshold is the budget in a sense, right? So I think that with the engineering that that was a. That was a situation where engineering costs were higher than than anticipated, but um. Jonathan is right, and you're right, that. You know, the majority of smaller contracts are not to exceed. And that is generally how you do, whether it be service or the equipment, all that, of course, ends up. You know, construction, those tend to be more sealed bids and you have an upper threshold.
Right.
Yeah, I I think I just want to understand. If we were to leave the limits as they are now. What are we hampering, you know, for the next budget year? What? You know, actions, decisions that the. Staff, mayor would take, are we inhibiting by not raising these?
You're delaying possible action that needs to be taken. By as much as three, three to four weeks if we have to take certain things to council, so. Um. That. You know, I don't think it's. Again, pick a number higher than fifteen, okay? Jonathan suggested doubling it, so fine, make the mayor thirty. Uh. Make uh, the administrator ten. Make uh, the clerk three. And we'll go with that.
It it sounds so capricious when you throw it out that way. Um, I just want to know, and I think going back to what Ralph had asked for, which was data. Is how do we, I mean, I mean, yes, if you got, if you can make a case of. Of why thirty is the right number or why, you know, whatever it is, you know, we'll, we of course don't want to. We want to strike the right balance between oversight and, you know, not and allowing the staff and the mayor to. Go ahead and, you know, manage the town. Um. It's just um, these recommendations. They're numbers, but they're, but but the reason, I'm just looking for the why these particular numbers. Why don't the current numbers work and why do you need these numbers? And I I saw the comparisons uh, in the statement. I did my quick analysis and. You know, we're already. In the right. Sweet spot if we're comparing to Alta versus their budget. If I if I have their, if their budget is three million. Um, if their budget is three million, and I had to Google it to find out what it was, and versus our budget, which is closer to two million. Um, and maybe their budget's higher or lower, I don't know. I just did a quick Google on each of these, you know. We can't even compare to Park City because their budget is just so outrageously large. Uh, just because they have a hundred thousand dollars doesn't mean anything to us. At all.
Here's what I'm recommending, okay? I'm recommending no change for the mayor. I'm recommending uh. Bringing. Chan. Or the town administrator up to ten thousand. Um, and uh, bringing Alicia to five thousand or the clerk recorder up to five thousand. Because that simplifies my life. Uh, at least somewhat, and uh, I'll stay at fifteen.
Okay, simplifies your life, so now we're kind of getting into the why. Why are we doing this? Um. Because you you want to give Jan more uh, budget authority, so her limits are higher, so she can go ahead and make these decisions. You don't have to be engaged. Right? So Jan, I since you're here, and I need to put you on the spot, but. What would change if your limit? Went up. From. Uh, town, I'm looking for. Town administrator, where is it here?
It's five thousand.
Oh, Jan's currently at five. Okay, and you want to move her up to whatever the new number is. So Jan, how would that help you? Please just explain to us how that would help you.
I think you know my spending sensibility. It's it's hard for me to even, you know, sign off on. A smaller contract without input from council or mayor. Um. I I see it mainly as um, increasing our efficiency. Increasing the mayor's ability to function in um. Certain goals and plans, and I look back to our retreat at the beginning of the year. Um, I did an R F P. During the Christmas break, anticipating that we could move the retreat goals forward. And um. To get funding from the state, we need a plan, and. I was anticipating that we could move that forward, and. There was some. Some confusion in our procurement policy, and that's kind of how all of this started. And here we are, you know, we're six months later. I've I've done the R F P, we reviewed the R F P. But now we need to keep coming back to the council. I feel like we were. Kind of stymied, not able to move forward on goals and plans. And um. Yeah, ten thousand. In today's world gets eaten up really quickly, and you know, I was on a project. With Jonathan on the fire station where he um. Uh, noticed that as well. We. We needed some assistance with fundraising and um. That money ran out really quickly, and so. If we're in the middle of a project. You know, to stop, put it on an agenda, get everybody up to speed. Um, that just really can slow progress and um. You know. I think. Thirty or fifty thousand for the mayor is a reasonable number, frankly. Um, I. I think we should allow the mayor to. To be able to function in uh. Progression, and especially as we approach some difficult issues upcoming. Um, allow the mayor to to actually spend money um, in a way that he. Uh, he sees in the best interest of the town. So anyway, that's my input.
I don't know if that helps you or not, Chris.
Well, you know, when you ask us for discreet, you know, here you want something from move five thousand to twenty five thousand, it's like, okay, that's. Five times higher. Uh, and it's a lot of money, but. If you have a good reasons, I mean, we don't want to. We're like I just said, we. We want to try to balance oversight with. Giving the town administration and the mayor freedom, spend as you need to, stay within the budget. And get stuff done, because we all, we all want you to get stuff done, too. We don't want to be a bottleneck. For sure. But. We also don't want to have, we don't want to find out after the fact. That. Something has gone substantially over budget. When. It may not have had there been additional oversight. So. I again, you're asking us for specific money. I I I don't, I don't know, it's pretty ar, feels arbitrary. Without the data. It's hard to make a decision without data.
I've been in this job. Been in this job for six years. Brought budgets to the table for six years. Um. Have performed, I believe. Reasonably well against those budgets. We've made some decisions as a council. Uh, during COVID, for example, not to do a tax increase. And that we would absorb, you know, a cost increase uh. Um, in order to not stress the community during the time of COVID, for example, we made those kinds of decisions together, so. Uh, so we have used some reserve funds consciously. Um. But. So I, it bothers me a little bit that um. That there's, there's an underlying sense that um. I'm not doing my job here, and I'm. Trying not to. See it that way, but it, but I am hearing it that way from time to time here, so.
Well, Mayor, I don't mean to be um, implying you're not doing your job. I just, I'm still feeling the impact of engineering overruns. That's kind of my. Thing, the engineering overruns, it's so, and now we're. And and that's, and I know that we're ma, we've already taken steps to correct everything, and you know, we have lots of reasons why that happened, but. Are you saying that if we raise? Your approval amount and Jan's approval amount. And Alicia's approval amount that we. Should feel confident. That. You know, the three of you. Because we're talking about individuals right now, right, in these the occupying positions, so we should feel confident that the three of you. Um, these are the right amounts for you to pro- provide your own oversight. And that we should feel confident in that. Is that what you're? That and that's, that's what's in front of us, right? That we should feel confident that these are good amounts for you all to each. Um, provide the appropriate amount of oversight for.
Again, I will re, I will restate. I will restate that um. The clerk. Number. Um. And the uh, administrator number come to me. Up to my limit. So. As I mentioned before, it provides. Them with some flexibility not to in engage with me. Um. When they need to do something above their limit, uh, but not above mine. So uh, I do talk to the staff weekly. Most weeks. Uh, I have weekly calls with Jan, weekly calls with Alicia, weekly calls with Gordon, weekly calls with Dan. I I'm, you know, keep keep my finger on the pulse of what's going on, what needs to be done. Um. So I. I am comfortable. With the people and their. Um. Their awareness of cost controls to encourage. Us to approve raising their authorization limits.
Okay, good, thanks. That's what I wanted to hear. So Mayor, you mentioned Dan. Where's Dan fit into this? Because I knew town engineer, I think you said you were gonna take that out, because our town engineer is a contractor now.
I believe that uh, Public Works has five thousand dollars. I believe.
Is that in here? Like, is are we considering that as a? Limit?
I don't, I don't, it's a good question, uh, Chris, because I don't see it in here, because but there is.
I didn't see it either, that's why I'm asking.
Uh, Jan, I don't know, do you have it offhand what we have for Public Works?
I I believe it's five thousand as well.
Believe it is as well.
Okay, so the coordinates are following amounts, but Public Works isn't listed in here, but you're saying. That that town clerk, Public Works have the same amount. I'm sorry, sorry, currently town clerk has one, one point. Five thousand. And. That town administrator. Town engineer and Public Works each have five thousand limit.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, so if we're raising town administrator limit to twenty five, are we raising Public Works to twenty five?
No. No.
So what would Public Works be?
Five thousand.
Okay, so that's not on the table to raise. Public Works is five thousand.
Yep.
So we should amend the code to just include in that number. Zero four zero one. Along with town clerk, we should put or. Public Works, um, head of Public Works or. Chief Head Public Works.
Only if we bring them to the same number.
Well, because if if assuming that. Number one goes up to five thousand, but the clerk. And Public Works, however you want to do it, we should put. Public Works into the.
In separate line items, okay?
Yeah, sure.
That's the best way to do it. That way. Because things may change um, in public workspace, may change over time, the cost of doing. Some of the routine work may change. Um. So. I think we should have them separate, so that as we get data from how many times Dan has to call me, we can look at. Whether or not we need to make a change there without affecting. Uh. What the clerk does.
So wait, so wait, so if Dan goes over five thousand, he'll call you or will he call Jan?
He calls me at the moment.
Can he call Jan? Because Jan has a twenty, potentially a twenty five thousand. Limit.
And currently has five thousand.
Okay, I I understand. I know when we're late raising limits, we've got buckets, right? But um, I'm just trying to understand, so Mayor, I'm not.
So if you asked a question, I I answered it. Um, you're saying after, if we make these changes, could he go to Jan?
Right, because Jan's limit is twenty five, so would she have the approval? The next limited approval authority up to twenty five, so nobody has to go to you yet at twenty five. Is that how we're structuring this? I mean, because it seems to me that's what we're trying to do, right? Mayor is allowed. I mean, because it seems to me that's what we're trying to do, right? Mayor is allowing staff to function.
Yes, Dan, Dan, you know, Dan reports administratively through Jan um and could, could if if she had a higher authority, approve Public Works expenses, yes.
And that's what we're trying to go for, right, Mayor? We're trying to give
Well, I'm, I'm, you know, again, you know, I trust Jan to call me if he's asking for um you know, something she doesn't understand or whatever, and then fine. But in the meantime, if it's in the budget and she understands it, like the the new meters or whatever, then I'm, yes, she should be in a position to tell Dan, go ahead and buy ten of the things, two.
Okay, good. So, so we're getting somewhere. So authority level, raising putting Count Town Clerk and Public Clerk Works at the same level, which proposal is five thousand. Then Jan at up to the twenty five thousand. So anything that goes under twenty five thousand or up to twenty five thousand goes to Jan for approval, anything beyond that and up to whatever the number is for the mayor, let's say it's fifty. Then everything else goes to Mayor for fifty. After fifty, council. That's really what, what we're, we've got in front of us, right?
Exactly.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful.
So just that that if council is uncomfortable with these numbers, I'm comfortable adjusting them down as long as they're greater than they are today for those, for those two roles.
So Down to what, Mayor?
Want the mayor to have forty, give him thirty. Just pick a number. If you want to leave it at fifteen, leave it at fifteen. It just means I can't raise Jan to twenty five.
Right.
Once again, I I would advocate that we double each of these numbers. We give the ten, tha- that's the starting point. Number two, we give the Town Administrator uh authority and responsibility for oversight and the ability to delegate. And three, I would argue that every contract should have a not to exceed price in it. Uh and and that's, 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 I I feel real strongly about that, and I'm gonna urge that the council consider that.
I'm gonna push back, Jonathan, um and tell you that our key contract um service roles. Uh so engineering, legal and planning are driven by um not just our intent of how we want to operate. They're also driven by um the costs associated with their efforts, because either people are bringing us uh new developments, people are uh engaging the the town in legal, legal matters. Um then we have to respond to those. Um and so we, we can talk about it at at budget reviews, and we do those quarterly. Um and tell you that we are here at this point in time in the year and and we're, we're spending beyond the projected run rate, because there are um legal issues and requiring more polyamorous time, or there are engineering issues uh that have to be resolved, that require more, more of Gordon's and or TOs or Adoras or whatever time. Um and so it's, it's hard to put a not to exceed on those, because outside circumstances cause us to engage our, our, our key staff people. I'm fine with the concept for any given specific project where there's uh, you know, driven at the, at the extent of the town's desire, for example, bids to repave the road or whatever. I'm fine with that, because we're gonna get busy, we're gonna look at that, we're gonna come to you and say we got, we need to authorize twelve thousand dollars or a hundred twenty thousand dollars in, in the budget against, against the road repairs or whatever it is. Um but I, I have, the mayor has to have the ability to ask the legal resources or the engineering resources to step in. Um and um and do what they need to do to make sure that the community is being protected uh to the best of our ability from um from, you know, legal challenges that we think we should be pushing back on, or engineering challenges that we think we should be pushing back on.
I don't, I don't, I'm sorry, I couldn't finish.
Not to exceed is, you know, all we can do is track and ex- explain the exigent, exigent circumstances when we do the budget reviews with council. Um we can also, at that same time, say, as a result of these things, we might choose to delay a town uh based project to keep the budget in line. So if we were hoping to do an upgrade to a sewer system or something, but we're ending up spending more of our engineering dollars doing uh oversight um and cleanup of, you know, a, a poor uh, I don't know, a poor piece of work being done in the community, then you know, we say, okay, we've got, we're, we're, we're spending ahead of, of schedule, and so the best way to control that gets our budget is we'll look at, see if we can defer a project.
I, I, I don't necessarily disagree there. There are going to be surprises. We are gonna run into stumbling blocks. We are gonna run into issues, uh but I would suggest that if for some reason, um you know, we run into a need to, to, you know, raise that not to exceed, a simple amendment is, is not so difficult. And I would hope that if we run into a legal issue, or we run into a giant engineering problem, which, you know, at any moment could rear an ugly head. Um and and that we're gonna go over our, our, our contract amount, then perhaps that might be something that the council ought to be aware of and and authorize a, an amendment. Tha- that's, that's my perspective.
Yes, I'm struggling with the fact that the budgeted amount is in my view, the not to exceed number. So as long as legal is coming in at or below the, the budgeted amount, then we don't have an issue. So isn't that basically, I mean, isn't that the not to exceed number? What we budget for that, that function?
Oftentimes, I, 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 I think it is. Um but I think there are surprise situations that come along where, you know, uh for example, we didn't expect a bill of such and such from such and such, uh you know, provider. And having a not to exceed in the contract ensures that we won't get that surprise, because at, at the point when that, that vendor uh gets close to that or hits that, the town is protected from a holy crap, uh you know, they're suddenly billing us for three times or twice or one and a half times what uh, you know, what the contract says.
I mean, if someone goes over the budget, you would, I, I think that the, in a, in a sense, that is for those types of contracts, that is the not to exceed, because if you do go over the budget, you would come back and ask for more. Um you know, I think that there's a way to work with those um providers. All, you know, all of us, all of us who have those kind of contracts, and maybe it's, you know, obviously I have that kind of contract, Thomas does. Uh Engineering does, but um you know, we all work very closely with staff, and you know, they're seeing our monthly charges, so we should, you know, we can work closer with finance, where if it looks like it's more than what's kind of scheduled over the year, then that would be a time to have a talk and, and say you know, what are you working on? But usually, the scope of the work is I mean, at least in my experience, I don't look at the others' bills, but it's more reactive and something happens and, you know, someone comes in for an annexation and Thomas needs to address that. And I think that that's a function of the town. So to, I mean, I guess you could put in it would be one more, it would almost be the same thing, right? I guess if you put in a not to exceed and it's the budget amount, then you have to go back and amend the contract as opposed to just amend the budget. It's gonna have the same effect.
And that's kind of the effect I'd like to see. If, if all of a sudden, we run into a new lawsuit, we run into uh some engineering problem that wasn't foreseeable, then, you know, and we're gonna go over the contract amount. Well, I think that's a matter that council needs to be apprised of, and then let's, you know, let's amend the contract by simply scratching out X amount and inserting Y amount.
That's fine. We can do that, Jonathan. I, I have no issue with that.
Because nobody's gonna get in the way. If we run into a legal problem, or we run into an engineering nightmare, I, I can't imagine anyone on this this body would, would say no, we have to deal with it. And so let's figure out how much we're gonna need to deal with it, and let's, let's amend the contract, and let's do it you know, immediately.
If I could add a couple of points here, um one, I, I don't think we still have the data to support whether, um you know, that we'd have exceptions or not. So um and, and where they may have fallen um in the past or might fall in the future. Uh so without that data, I'm going on the recommendation, here's what I'm leaning towards um at this point, and that is leaning on the data, leaning on what the administrators of the town, specifically the mayor and the town administrator do as an everyday function, because I think they have more specific data that they've come across themselves. I mean, they are the runners, they are the managers of the town. So to a large extent, Mayor, I'm relying on your input more than anything on this. And I think, given everything you've said, the town, yourself, et cetera, you know, for the past number of years that I have been involved, we've never had any issues or any major issues that I know of. We haven't had any exceeding of, you know, uh of guardrails. Um yes, the council could still maintain some voting rights on some of this, but I'm not sure that provides any long-term efficiency that you'd like to achieve. Um so I'm generally in favor of whether we raise it um, you know, a, a hundred percent, or um we go to the fifty, whatever that might be. Uh given the fact that I think the town has been fairly well-run on, on, on this aspect. My biggest concern is actually not the mayor, the town administrator now, but eventually um this carries over to the next administration, to potentially a new town administrator. Um where, you know, so all of those things, we don't have a rule of good feeling on. And uh and that lea- you know, that tends to lead you to being more conservative. But um I'm, you know, at least from my opinion at this point, I'm gonna lean into what you mayor have, have, are recommending. And our town administrators recommending, given the fact that you've been running the town for a number of years, and we haven't had any issues, and we need to make it, we should be thinking about greater efficiencies at this point. Um with the caveat, my concern is what happens in, when people leave and you have new people coming aboard, so.
Ralph, I'm glad you brought that up, right? We have an election next year. I know, two council seats and the mayor up for election next year. We don't know who the next mayor is gonna be. If it'll be Phil, if you're even running, it'll be somebody else. Um I know that it works for this year to, to up it for fifty thousand. That's what the mayor's asking for. You know, we wanna try to accommodate that. Uh I would hope that Jan's gonna be around for a while. Uh but you're right, we don't know who is gonna occupy these positions, so we have to kind of think of them not in terms of who's there now, but just the position itself. And the Yep, yep, right. And the um percentage, fifty thousand on a from two million, sorry, what's our budget? Two million dollar budget is a higher percentage than any of the other comparables that we were given here. Um so it, it just concerns me, because then we're, you know, outside of the norm, the norm for the comparables. Not that we can't do it, it's just we're outside the norm. Um I, I do a- agree. We, we like to act fast here. This is hideout, right? We we distinguish ourselves, bec- you know, in some ways from other cities and towns, because we are able to act relatively fast on things. And, you know, we just, as long as we're able to stay fiscally responsible. So it's, it's hard to i- it's just, we're try- we, we know if we pass this, it's going to stick, right? And it doesn't matter who's in any of these positions. These are the limits. Yes, like we can come back and change them and lower them, should we find that there's some kind of abuse going on. Um which I guess is, you know, again, again, our prerogative in the future. Uh it's just that again, I'm gonna, gonna say yes to, to Ralph. Uh thanks for asking for data. You know, I, I know we're asked to make decisions without having all the data all the time. So in this case, we were asked to make a decision. I think we should raise the limits. Um yes, the question is to what? Do we just take these suggestions and say, okay, well, somebody smarter than me and knows what's going on, thought that these were important limits, because they have a specific problem that they're trying to solve. And so um, you know, I guess we I, I just wanted to know that I am in support of raising the limits, but it's really just a question, raising to what?
Um I'd like to make a comment if I could. Um this, this is Carol. Um I'm hearing the other council members. It seems to me that most of the council members feel that the recommended raising was a little excessive. Uh Mayor, if I'm not, um I'm pretty sure that I heard you say that you are willing that you will accept doubling the amount that um is currently um authorized. So I would suggest that maybe we go with that. That we double everybody's um authorization. And we sit with that for a while and see if that's going to be enough, if that or if they have to come back to us, or we're not giving them enough uh leeway to, with what they need. So um I, I'm, I'm going with um the recommendation that we double all the recommendations. And then that should um settle down some of the thoughts.
I'm gonna push back on that a little bit. Um so I'm happy for the mayors to be doubled. That'd be one point five percent of budget. I'd like to raise the administrator to one percent of budget. That would be twenty thousand dollars. And I'd like to uh raise the clerk to point two five percent of budget. That would be five thousand dollars.
I personally would be fine with those numbers. Uh I do wanna add the, 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 give the administrator authority for, for oversight and, and to delegate that oversight. Um but I, 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 I would be in favor of that.
Because the, the, the reason I'm saying that, Carol, is they, they come to me before they come to you. And so if, if Alicia has to come to me every time she wants to authorize something needed for more than fifteen hundred bucks, I mean, we need a new computer, she has to come to me. Well, Jan, actually, because I think most of the time computers aren't in five grand, but just to say. Um so that's all I'm trying to do is let them have the, the space they need to do their day-to-day stuff. Um and so I'm fine with the, with the mayor authority being one and a half percent of budget or thirty thousand dollars. But I do, I, would be helpful to me if we could raise Jan not to ten, but to twenty, which is one percent of budget.
So thirty, twenty and five, is that the recommendation that I'm hearing so far? Thirty for you, twenty for Jan, five for Alicia? Is that, is that, is that what I'm hearing, Phil?
That's what you're hearing.
Okay. And, and um along with that, so I'm fine with that. Uh you know, or, or any slight variation of that. That sounds like a good compromise um as well. And uh but I'd also like to encourage that we revisit this in, you know, a year. And we have, we build some data around exactly what we've accomplished. Um and, you know, we revise, we revise, if we need to revise, certainly we probably wouldn't revise down. But if we need to revise up, that we um revise further up, because there's still too many inefficiencies in what we've just cre- voted In what we've just voted on, so to speak. So I would encourage the data collection as a piece of. I mean, it sounds fa- fairly simple to me is just create a little spreadsheet and check those things off. As, as we go along throughout the year that fall into those categories. And I think that gives us evidence for. Um, maintaining it or potentially raising it again, you know? Does that make sense, Phil?
Yeah, it does. I mean, that's what finance does for us monthly and quarterly.
Yeah, so.
Nothing new there.
Before we get to a vote, there is one more piece, the emergency purchasing authority. Uh, uh, I'd like to visit that if we could. Um, I'm a firm believer that the mayor needs emergency authority when the. Water is gushing out of the pipe, the sewer is gushing up, or, or the snow is, is, is strangling the town. Um, and I would only suggest a minor tweak to the language, and that is. Where it says where there is a threat to the health, wa- welfare and safety, that we insert the word immediate threat or imminent threat. To health, welfare and safety, because everything in the world is a threat to us. Uh, it, it's gotta be imminent threat to trigger. Um, you know, the mayor's emergency authority to do what needs to be done. And again, I'm in favor of giving the mayor the authority to do whatever needs to be done when, when the sewer is gushing or whatever. I, I just want that threat to be imminent or, uh, yeah, I like the word imminent, I guess, the best.
So you're talking about in, in section five here? Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Jonathan, is that a legal de- definition you're, you're applying, or is that just a subjective word that you're adding?
Well, in im- in my mind, in my subjective view, uh, imminent means the threat is here now. The water is gushing, the sewer is gushing. The snow is strangling the ability of the fire department to get, uh, to people in need. Uh, whereas, uh, not so imminent, something that is not imminent is, well, you know, the pipe could break. Uh, or the, the snow could fall. I mean, it has to be a real live emergency. That is, that is presented. And that's what I'm trying to get at. Perhaps Polly has a, a, a different adjective. I'm. I'm thinking imminent or immediate, uh, something that suggests that it has to be dealt with right now or else. Uh, you know, we're gonna have. Uh, some catastrophic, uh, uh, situation.
Yeah, what Jonathan is describing is a risk versus an issue, right? An issue is something that's happening now. It has happened or is happening now. Whereas a. Risk is something that could happen. Well, we need to worry about it because it could happen, but we're not sure if it'll happen. And if it does happen, it might be really substantial, but it might not. I think you're, that's where you're going, right, Jonathan?
Yes.
So I, I'm fine with the thought process. I'm fine with the word unless Polly tells me there's something different to put it. I'm fine with that. We can, I think we all pretty much know what imminent means. Uh, we might have. It might be right this second, or it might be in the next hour, but, uh, it, it's short, it's very short term. Um, as opposed to sometime in the next five years, we're gonna have to replace the road surface or whatever. So, um, so I'm fine, the insertion of imminent in there. I'm fine with. Uh, figuring out where in here to, uh, put the not to exceed language. And if you're comfortable, uh, with the numbers that I suggested, which is. One and a half percent or thirty thousand, and we can put that in there, um. As thirty thousand, I think somebody pushed back that. If, if the budget changes and the amounts change, so we maybe we shouldn't have a sliding scale. We should have fixed numbers so we can put fixed numbers in. Um, and when that one and a half percent becomes point five percent of the budget, then we can talk about raising the number again.
I, I think, Mayor, we should have fixed amounts for now, but as. Ralph suggested, come back and re- review this periodically to make sure that we're not too out of line with our current percentages. Of, you know, point two five percent, one percent, one point five percent. I mean, our budgets shouldn't be that crazy. Uh, within the year, you know, which is what we plan versus actual. So I think if we review it. I don't know, twice a year or something like that, we should be okay. And then we can, you know, up the amount as needed. Um, depending on what the budget is, but.
We'll have, we'll have fixed numbers.
Can I ask, uh, for one other, um, cha- or I guess have it be consistent? So, right, so how this was drafted, I made. The contract numbers to match when. Um, RFPs are required versus competitive bid, you know, for the competitive bids. Um, so can I change that? So purchases up to five thousand, no competitive price quotations. I'll change the purchase where you get informal quota, up to three quotations. Or at least three quotations from five. I'll make it to twenty and then purchases over thirty. Will require form, formal seal bids because those are the ones that would go to council. And then likewise, this is, I'm sorry, one sixteen zero fifty. And then likewise, I'd just like to have that internal consistency. And then also for procurement of professional services and request for proposals. Currently, if the contract, well, cur- currently was ten thousand for fiscal year. And we changed to fifty thousand to match the mayor's. So I'll change that to thirty. Just so that it's consistent in terms of the, when you're doing those different operations. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
So, yeah, I was gonna say, uh, let's let you, um. Now that we, I think we've kind of settled on a direction, I'll, I'll let you, we won't, we won't do this tonight. We'll, um, we'll let you rewrite it with the changes, adding like the N T E. Language, uh, adjusting the imminent threat, uh, changing the numbers to against the five, twenty and thirty. Um, et cetera, so that, um, and bring back for us next month, something that we can. Um, finalize and approve.
Okay, I can do that.
No, that sounds good. And since we have another month before we would wanna finalize and approve. Is it possible to find out what. Contracts we've awarded in the recent past that would be at these new thresholds, you know? Contact, uh, so clerk versus, um, town administrator versus mayor. Just so that we have a little bit of data. I know, John, I know. Yeah, just so we know, understand in terms, we can under, you know, it's not just theoretical anymore, but it's actually, here's what we spent money on. Already, and this is where they would, they would fit now in our new schema.
We have every day. And.
Just some information, Mayor, that's all.
The only difference that you'll see, other than at the mayor level, is that. Um, we've spent money above the limits of the administrator and the clerk. Um, but authorized by me. So there's a document behind it. Alicia says to me, the elevator needs. You know, six thousand dollars, you know, and this is what's going on. And I, and I say I approve.
You're great. So just real world examples that would be really, really helpful. And I think you'd get us completely on board if you were able to do that. You know, so it's not just theoretical. Here are some numbers and percentages of our budget, blah, blah, blah. But. Okay, so what this means is now Alicia doesn't have to call you to get the elevator fixed, for example. Or Jan doesn't have to call you to get somebody engaged to handle. Some professional services that we need, uh, or whatever, just so we just have some answers.
Maybe he doesn't have, only he can call Jan.
E- exactly. So that's just, that'll help everyone, not just us, it'll help everyone, anybody who's paying attention to, to understand. You know, how, how we're helping the town function better.
All the street signs and, and lights and things that Dan bought to help work on road safety and stuff like that. All, most of that had come through me.
Per- perfect. So if you could include, just include that. So you have a month now until we're considering this again. Just a little bit of that extra information will go a long way.
I think it also helps, Chris, you know, anyone in town who may have questions on why, why did you vote this way, you know? It gives us some support as a town council and town administrator and mayor that we've got some legs to stand on. So data is always good for, if not that, or hey, it may tell you something else. I'm not expecting that. But, so let's, let's use this as a supportive mechanism.
Thank you, Ralph. Exact- exactly. And then we get a little glimpse into the life of. Uh, the town administration and what you guys face, you know, day after day, week after week, month, month after month, and how we are helping you. Um, be more efficient, effective, and able to be more quickly responsive.
And can I just make sure I got, um, I got all the changes the mayor mentioned. I have also added in. Uh, up to five thousand for the public works department had, um. Was there someone else that we had given up to five thousand other than the clerk? That was, okay, I, I thought I heard another person and I, I didn't jot it down. So that if we didn't.
I think we just, the engineer out, like, the engineer didn't have any purchasing authority, right? It goes to public works, town administrator, mayor.
Yeah, okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So I've got this. I just have to put in one more thing, but we'll bring it back next month.
So this is, um. That'd be fine. And I don't think that this is, sorry. This was just a discussion item and a possible adoption, I think.
Yeah.
Right? So we'll, so we will. Take it back to the working group and come back to you next month. It'll be appropriate because it aligns with the, uh. Twenty four, twenty-five budget approval as well. So it will. Next ma- next month, next month, next, yeah, next month will be a, uh, an adjusted meeting, if everybody remembers that as well. Because we have to do the truth and taxation hearing in, in addition to our standard stuff. So we'll be looking to. At the agenda, um, as it shapes up over the next few weeks and decide if we're starting at, at five thirty. Or six, uh, and ending no later than seven with the. Regular agenda, so we can do the truth and taxation at seven or seven thirty, whatever we decide once we look at it. Right? Just reminding everybody that there will be a slight, um, potential change to our start time next month. So just be aware. Depending on the agenda items.
So Mayor, before we, before we conclude, I just, uh, heard a lot of questions and, you know, I see some head nodding and stuff from. Ralph and, um. And Jonathan, I think, and just wanna make sure the whole council's good with the direction we're going in, like. Um, Carol, you're, are you okay with the direction we're going in and?
Right, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay. And Bob, you're, you're, you're good with this as well?
You guys wanna continue? And I'm actually fine with what Phil proposed initially, but, um, if you wanna chew on that some more, that's fine with me.
And if you, I have it together if you wanna vote on it now. But if you wanna wait till next month for more data, that's fine too. But I do have the changes done.
Oh, it doesn't feel urgent, right? What, are we preventing anything from happening in the next month? May- Mayor, maybe you can address that?
No, I was just trying to expedite, just to, it's not that, I'm just trying to make our meetings a little shorter. To have less items on it was my only reason.
Thank you.
I, I think we'd have more support from the town if we waited just a month. By having e- even, you know, examples, a couple of example data pieces that supports what we're trying to accomplish here. So.
It will help, it will help with the twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five budget and the management of.
Yeah, yeah. So, you know, I don't think a month's gonna kill us to get a better, get a better, you know, foundation going.
So that's fine.
After that. Thanks, Polly. Glad you're able to work so quickly. So, uh, yeah, no, I, I, I'm good. I'm good with the direction we went. I'm good with waiting to next month. If there's no imminent reason why we need it. To, to, we, we need to put it up promotion now, uh, so. Thank you. Good discussion though, Mayor, and, um. We really appreciate the discussion because I can tell you from where I sit, I don't have a lot of visibility to what happens on a day-by-day basis. In, in the town because, you know, I'm not there in town hall with people and I'm not. I'm not involved at the level you are. And, um, you know, I'm sure the other council members feel, probably feel the same way. So. You know, we wanna, we wanna make operations is. Yeah. We wanna, we wanna e- empower people as much as possible. So, um, so thank you for the discussion.
Well, thank you all for your, um. You know, the, the thing that, that you bring and comes out clearly is the concern. Uh, for managing the town's funds as, um, as efficiently as possible. And I think that's a good message to all of our constituents that, uh, that. Um, we're paying attention. And trying to do the right thing for the community. So thanks for the, um, the. The challenges and the thoughts that come through that help us, uh, make good decisions together. So. So good, good, good discussion and good thinking. And we'll beef it up a bit and come in next month with hopefully something that we're all. We won't need to spend a lot of time on because we've been through a lot of it already. So. We'll give you some data and then we'll, uh, we'll see if the numbers make sense and we'll get it done.
I, I wanna thank Alicia for providing the notes. They're, they're not the official minutes yet because they haven't come out from the last meeting, but just a quick. Update on the, the portion of the minutes that had our discussion in them. It'd be really good. We could have the same thing. In, in the next meeting so that we can just read those. Oh yeah, that's what we talked about. So we can like dispense with it, with this quickly, I think. Uh, next time. When I say dispense, I mean, come to a conclusion and, and take some action.
One, one last question. Would this come up for public comment? Uh, we, public input is part of the discussion on the next meeting. Because we haven't heard, or is Polly, this doesn't come up for, uh, public input?
It doesn't require a public hearing, but of course, if you wanted to allow the public to speak to it. We could just put it, you know, list it on the agenda for open to public comment or something like that. I don't like to make it a public hearing. Because then we have, that kind of has a different connotation and then we have to. Do noticing this and that. But if we, we could put it on the agenda for, um. Public comments. And you're gonna have a public hearing about the budget already.
I, I really would like to keep that separate. The budget is the budget. That's what the public gets to input on. How the administration. Fills the budget is, and, and who gets to sign what. I think is a council decision. I don't think we need the whole community to decide. Whether I should spend thirty thousand, twenty thousand or fifty thousand. I think it's.
Yeah, I wasn't advocating for one or another, Phil. I was more, you know, asking the question, does this open up? A public, uh, comment? And if not, that's fine. If so, fine as well. Just wanted to know. Which direction we're likely to run into in the next meeting.
People who would say I should have nothing. Look at the world today, guys. I mean, we, we are elected officials. Um, by our community to put in the structures and oversights required to run the town properly. Um, that's what they're, that's what they're electing us for. Um, it, we're not. It's not a, uh, a, a social experiment in a discussion around whether I should be able to sign this check or that check. I think we're, I think we're gonna get ourselves a lot of help if we're not careful.
Yeah, no, I'm, Mayor, I'm glad you said that. And Ralph, I'm glad you asked that question. So I, I'm, I'm total agreement. This is not something that I think we need to open up to the. Public for public input.
Well, it doesn't have to be anyway, so we're, we're covered there. So.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, people, if anybody's listening to this meeting, you're welcome to send in their thoughts, right?
Yeah.
And, and we'll read them, but, um, but ultimately, you know, I think it's up to the council.
I do. Okay, thank you again for all that. Um, let's move to. Committee updates. I think we're done with the agenda items. So let's try and get to committee updates. Um, so I think this Donna's still on, I, I just lost my list here, so, um.
Yes, hello, yes, I'm still here. Do you hear me?
How are you?
I'm okay, um. You're, uh, a little, a little longer than I thought you guys were gonna be, but some good discussions happening. How is, how are you doing?
We're fine. So why don't you tell us what's up with the planning commission? I think you've got some exciting stuff coming on your plate again. We're fine. So why don't you tell us what's up with the planning commission? I think you've got some exciting stuff coming on your plate again.
Yes, yes. So we had our meeting. It was rescheduled to uh June eighteen. Um we had a discussion. It was um quick, pretty quick um meeting that we do not much um at that meeting going on except for a discussion of an updated concept plan for the possibility of the development of Hideout Point Wild Horse. Um uh are you are you all familiar where that is?
No.
Okay, so that is a two acre site on two forty eight next to Claim. Um yeah, so kind of like next to in between the Wolf Property and um and Claim. If you're familiar with that, uh there was a talk about a brew pub at the site. Uh and they've now the developers have come back and uh they've come back with a proposed plan uh that included a restaurant with a brew pub, uh fifteen thousand square foot of commercial um and some other um you know, some other items in there, possibility with um a north side of the two acre site is seven acres. Um we're probably um I guess it's uh for the fire station and maintenance for the town.
Yeah.
Okay.
Current thought anyway, yeah.
Correct. And then um also, we own also uphill across from the Wolf driveway. And this is thirteen acres, about I believe it's like above the two acre site uh where more single family home lots will be um right now. But in order to do this proso- proposed concept, uh we will need to um rezone that. Um you know, for the restaurant and brew pub and the commercial. Uh so we gave feedback, our planning commissioners, we we all gave feedback that really offered no objections. Uh we really liked the plan, uh but no vote was taken at this time. Uh so we, you know, we had a discussion about that and um I then it went back to developers. So we did that. Okay. And then we also uh uh since then, we received information about the Salzman property. Uh let me just pull that up here too. My little discussion here I was going to talk about. Uh alrighty, so the Salzman property, uh which is uh will be sixty one townhomes, about one hundred and three lots. Um a lot of single family, mostly single family and some commercial. Um it will be only two parcels there that does not include the house. Uh and that is um I believe that is Nate Broadbank. And he is calling it Elkhorn Springs. So that is now coming up on the table. So I just want to let you know about that. I'm sorry, did you did you say something?
I was I was being facetious. I'm sorry. I said, at least it doesn't start with a deer.
I know. A little different than Bloom and Boulders, but it's a it's a it isn't a it isn't an animal related to a deer. So Elkhorn Springs is is the name that he has um that they have picked or he has picked. I'm not sure who picked it. But uh that is right now going to be uh coming up to us.
Yeah, thank you, Donna.
Questions?
So Donna, a quick question. Um well, I have two questions. Uh let's start with the Salzman property. There's some like time urgency there, right? Because of uh contractual arrangements. So they're trying to you know, get this appropriately heard, but heard in a timely manner, right? Through planning commission and council?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe it's like the end of October.
Well, this is the third go around, right? With same with is it this exact same property? Tom, maybe Thomas, you can tell us. It's the same property, right, as?
It is. It's the seventy two acres. It's on the eastern side. Yeah.
Yes. Okay, great. Third time around. We should be getting really good at this, right?
Uh we're 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 hopeful.
Okay. Um when is the next planning commission meeting? Uh Donna, that where this will be discussed?
So um I believe it's on thir- next Thursday on the nineteenth.
Yeah, eighteen.
Thursday, July?
Eighteen.
Eighteenth, I'm sorry. I'm not looking at my calendar right. It's next Thursday, July eighteen.
Okay, great. Everybody mark your calendars if you wanted to. Okay, thank you for that. And then um the brew pub item. Uh I mean, the two acre parcel. What are we calling that one? What's the name of that parcel?
So I don't know, Thomas, but it's right now called Hideout Point slash Wild Horse.
Yeah, I think.
Correct, Thomas?
I think it was Hideout Point with an E. And I think that Ty Frisbee's was Hideout Point without an E or vice versa. In any event, due to the confusion, I think that Tim Showen is now calling it Wild Horse Development. So Donna, I think you I think you're correct. What Hideout Point slash Wild Horse.
Okay, um okay. We'll be we'll be interested in knowing, you know, should it proceed through playing commission, how it fits in with the future uh you know, turn, you know, you know, we like to plan not just the two acre in its own like microscope microscopic view, but how it fits in with the future fire station and and all that. So I would just ask that we keep that in mind, you know, how it fits in with the existing Wolf property and the claim property and the fire station. So we can get kind of the big picture.
And yeah, the state party.
And you know, I think that's really important because, you know, we have a lot of development going on around us and you know, Maverick Station down the road and and I have recently heard of a liquor state liquor um liquor store going across the street from the Maverick Station.
Wait, where is the Maverick Station?
There's gonna be a Maverick Station um uh right on the corner of Frontage Road and two forty eight.
Yep.
And there. Where is that?
That is right there as you add down two forty eight as you're coming to Route forty soon as you pass Black Rock. And you're coming down the hill. And then Frontage Road is the road is the old Route forty.
Are you sure there's a Maverick Station there? Because isn't?
No.
Dunning County gonna realign the road there?
Yes, I have. I yes, I have heard there's going to be a Maverick Station there, yes, from a very reliable resource of somebody in Park City. And um and I've heard and I also that was made public in the in the paper in Park Record or on KPC. I've heard that. They have like probably like six months ago, they announced that. I just was not sure where it was going to be. And I just found out recently this week um that there's going to be a Maverick Station. They're going to move Frontage Road closer to uh Black Rock and and redo the whole interchange there at um where Route forty comes into two forty eight from Heber. They're gonna move it back. So it would make an intersection of Frontage Road and the exit coming off of of forty along with the rail trail. It'll align with the rail trail. So the rail trail will have a light.
Great, great. Because there's a lot of problems right there. Crossing uh crossing the rail trail with those little blinky lights. I see a lot of skid marks with cars like.
Yep.
Right? It's really a dangerous crossing. As a trail user, it's very dangerous. And it's very dangerous as a car driver, but the realignment of the road, those are important things for us to do just to keep tabs on. But I'm I'm happy to hear there's like a Maverick Station coming in because then we don't have to deal with a gas station and hide out. It's close enough. We don't want, we don't want a gas. I I personally don't want a gas station in there. It's not the right kind of development that we're looking for.
So that's what, you know, there's that going. I mean, that that's going on there. And then, you know, when we have the Ross Creek entrance, you know, we have that piece of property and then we have the, you know, the Wolf Hideout Point slash Wild Horse property. And then now Boulder slash Bloom slash uh currently Elkhorn Springs. I you know, we we I really think we need to think about the whole picture. And that's where like I really appreciate Thomas's input. And since he's the professional planner.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Donna. Appreciate it. Thanks for heading in there.
Oh, you're 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 welcome. Thank you. Have a good evening. Bye bye, Thomas.
Bye, Donna. Uh Ralph, anything on the EDC?
Ralph, you're on mute. We see your mouth moving, but you're on mute.
Yeah, left you left myself on mute here. Um yeah, so so Donna, if you stick around for a second, um we've had similar discussions with Jerry from the Tim Showen Group. Um so maybe I'll address that first because he came in discussing uh the similar development of the brew pub, et cetera, with the one caveat that they were considering raising the height to a third story. So that was a consideration. It wasn't an absolute, but you might see that coming across your path um as well with so modifications, call it. Um I don't think we had any issues with it as long as it didn't create obscur- uh you know, view shed obstructions and uh uh Jerry, who was representing Tim, uh was gave gave some some clarity to that and said they thought through that. But again, that's got to go through the planning commission. We are more concerned with um will this will this work economically? How will this fit into the big economic picture of the town? As we're as we've been talking about. So anyway, just a little feedback on that, Donna. And the other piece is um that you just mentioned, we did have uh Mr. Brockbank on Monday's uh EDC call and he went through, uh so it was myself, uh Tony was on the call, Jan, um Thomas, uh and then JD Cronin and uh Tim Mora, you know, who are official members of the EDC. So we all got to listen and uh questioned uh Nate on his development, what he wanted to do, things, issues. We discussed issues of water, um you know, potential, you know, where he where where he's in need, other things, whether even where there's water on the property potentially, um changing some areas or at least open to modifications. Um uh from an EDC standpoint, we asked for um even though there's not a huge amount of commercial there, we certainly asked for, you know, uh hit that that we get some nu- initial numbers. And since Nate is already very familiar with Rob Zant, who does most of our number crunching in a homogenized way across all developments, um he's gonna actually get in touch with Rob directly and and share some of his some of his preliminary uh development numbers. But all in all, was a very good, actually, both of those conversations were um very worthwhile and generally, I would say, good feedback. So those are two big things. Um we also had um in the past month, uh Steve Coleman and Henry Sig on the property across the way from uh the Jordanell and what they're doing with that. Some of the variations, we're still a little bit confused of that, but uh Steve has given uh Rob Zant some new numbers with some variations of what they might mean against the kinds of buildings that he's focused on on that would make sense. I think they're still trying to figure out what makes economic sense for them. And um and of course, that has to work. Otherwise, it's not going to work for for them or the town. So that I think they're still working through some of that. However, it there's some lack of clarity and we're just expecting hopefully in the future uh both at the planning commission level and the EDC that would get some greater clarity to that. Um then we also heard from our grant writer, Nancy O'Toole. Uh can't remember whom else we've had uh attend the last four meetings or three meetings. Sometimes we have impromptu meetings. Jan, any anything you want to add? Or Jonathan, you're on the line. You you attend the meetings as well. Anything from either of your end that you'd like to add? Sounds sounds like not a lot of input there. Uh so anyway, that's where we're at from the EDC.
I'd like to add one thing. Um Jonathan and I visited Tuahe on a fundraising mission and um I took notes on their uh financials and talked to the developer about how he had structured the resort community and um I think uh we should have another conversation at the EDC level that incorporates some of the best practices of Tuahe. That could be a win-win for the town. So I know just further information.
Okay.
Hey, Jan, anything we can do where there's regional combinations of money investment and built, you know, thought processes that complement both areas, that only makes developers more enthused about um jumping in with us. So that would, you know, therein lies yet another reason to cooperate with our neighbor.
Yes.
Right, Chris?
Oh, thank you. Let me lower my hand. Um wait, I hit lower hand. It didn't lower, lower. Uh Ralph, can I ask you a question? So do you remember when Jerry Duennell was on the council and one of his passion projects was getting the hideout sign replaced? And you know, I think we got Nate to commit to one, at least installing one of them along two forty eight corridor. And since then, you know, the post committee has not forgotten about this. But it's not really hundred percent in our purview. And it feels like more of an economic to possible, a possible economic development. Quick win is to getting those entryway signs. And Thomas, tell me if what the correct terminology is for those because I'm just making it up.
I I think this is very funny you're bringing this up because I've incorporated this into the staff report for the planning commission next week as part of, you know, looking at upsoning for the Salzman property could be look at instead of one sign, getting two signs because it is important for people to understand when they come into the community from the north or the south. And so we've actually in incorporated that into the staff report for discussion. So we are both on the same page.
But I want to say that, and if my memory serves, which it might not, I do recall, I thought Nate had promised us one sign along two forty eight. It's in somewhere, some.
He did, and he promised somewhere like thirty thousand dollars for that kind of sign, if you remember correctly.
Well, yeah.
And now that he has, he he has the bookends to the town essentially. So why don't we just say, hey, Nate, you know, two for one, um you know, um if you if if it it just packages into into the Salzman property.
Well, can the Economic Development Committee and the Planning Commission, you know, kind of like grab on to that and help us get rid of that? You know, if you go to a park record article, sometimes they show the wooden sign at Ross Creek and it's I I remember Jerry, this, like I said, it was his passion project because he considered that sign an embarrassment. So um I like I said, the post committee hasn't forgotten about it, but we, as you, when we go to our update, we've got our hands full with something else this summer. And you know, we're there's only so much we can handle. But is it possible for maybe a quick win for the Economic Development Committee to try to get these ent- these town entryway signs, at least, you know, get some traction on them? I know there's some challenges with UDOT and placement and the type of signs and whether or not they you know, you can put, I I don't remember all the considerations. Thomas probably does, but can we try to get some traction? And I feel like it's an economic development item because, you know, when you're driving through, that's what you see. You know, it's like a big advertisement for the fact that you're in Hideout, Utah. And um is this something maybe a a quick win, an EDC quick win? Just because some of your, it seems like some of your um strategies, uh project spots are really big picture years in the making kind of thing. Whereas this is something that could be very it's a it's a physical deliverable, right? That can can you possibly like take this up?
I don't see why not, Chris. I think we've been asking um any of the developers for any of these projects, whether it's inside the bookends or, you know, or the now the bookends or when it was a Jenny Ryan kind of thing. We've had asks, you know, um for those developers. Uh this to me is pretty minor, especially for the uh the areas that are bookends. And it just so happens that it falls now within the purview of the same developer. For Anna. So I don't, you know, I I my guess is I don't think there's going to be any issue. Now, it just is just a really great reminder from you, Chris, that we need two good signs. Um, leading from one end to the other, they should be consistently of good quality. And I don't know if they have to be exactly the same. We have maybe think about that artistically, but you know, let's make sure that um, it's built into our, any of the economical. Yeah, and and it's such a minor item, but that's good reminder.
Town's minor, but the devil's in the details, Ralph. Thomas is going to tell you that devil's in the details. So.
I would also say that as they go forward with the rezone, that that would be part of an MDA, any of those emit would be part of an MDA. So if he's agreed to that, which I suspect he would be because he was good to work with in terms of Deer Springs on the north end, this is really, you know, kind of hideout on the south, we would incorporate that into the MDA.
But we don't have the Deer Springs new sign, the thing that replaces the wooden thing at Ross Creek. That hasn't been delivered. We gotta get that, right, we gotta get that delivered and then we gotta get it at the other end. Because again, I would hope Ralph, if you're if your committee wants to take this up, it's an actual deliverable. You don't have to wait five years for it. It's something that we'll see.
He's he's already committed to it as far as I know, so let's just hold hold them committed to it. And let's talk to him about making this consistently, if if he has the other bookend, so to speak, then we make this consistent. And lastly, if you think about it, if we if we go forward, if the annexation continues to go forward, he's actually got that bookend or that end of the town. Does he move this, you know, do we do we move that sign to where the annexation? Do we have two signs? I don't know. Um, good question, but you know, Thomas, it sounds like a good thought, good, good question for how we design this for entrance to our towns, you know, so.
We have a design and we already approved a design, Ralph, years ago, right, with when Jerry was here. We have an approved design. I remember, I remember voting.
So, yeah, we have approved design, but but I was thinking also, um, that only concerns the one sign. So if that's an approved design, we make that a standard design. I think it was metal if I'm if I if I'm not mistaken, that um, would would age appropriately. I don't know, Thomas, jump in if you remember exactly what the structure that we.
Do we need that detail now, guys, or we just? Thomas has it, Thomas has it under his belt. Um, it, we we have not forgotten about it, Chris. Um, I think, you know, with with all the changes that have occurred um, in the recent, both with our borders and potential uh, additional annexation pieces, we have to think a little bit about where's really the best place to put it or do we do do you affect a design that allows it to be portable? Portable is the wrong word, but movable. So that, yeah, because as our borders change, then does does the sign move with it kind of thing? So I think there needs to be some thinking about it, or we just have multiple signs. I don't know, but the Thomas and the 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 folks, Jan, working on the 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 vision for the for the future can do some work on that.
Great. I'm just looking for ownership. I don't want it to die and I don't want to see that wooden sign, you know, too much longer. That's all.
There's another issue too, that we may be moving the road, the entrance to the road, which would um, make us need to move the sign. So I I'm in agreement with mayor, we need, we need an updated overall vision and then we can make those decisions wisely.
Okay, I'm just saying that the 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 Parks Open Space Trails Committee, even though we have never lost sight of the sign, we're going to now, it's not going to be our thing to to do. We're asking that another committee take ownership of it. And I'm asking that the Economic Development Committee take ownership of it.
And I'm suggesting necessarily PC item, it's probably just a planning item. We've put it on the agenda there with Jan and Thomas will handle it. Um, Ralph, I mean, if you guys want it, that's fine, but.
All only from the standpoint that it should be part of, you know, a simple negotiation, like if you own this piece of property where the sign is going to be and you want to develop on it, that that's inclusive of the the uh, you know, our our standard signage as part of the agreement, so to speak, as as Thomas was alluding to. That's all, you know, I don't think this is gonna, I don't think we need to pre, you're right, this, we don't need to press on uh, too far on this. This is kind of what a minor, minor thing, but important in terms of that. You know, the ambiance and the the way the town is perceived.
It's not that on this, that's what I'm hearing.
That's what?
I'm hearing Economic Development Committee is not going to own the, uh, to make sure the sign happens.
I kind of view it as an MDA issue. Um, it's, you know, one of the things to be negotiated as part of an MDA. And then, you know, if if the if the entrance or the road is moved, you know, then there should be a a s- a secondary section saying that in the event of X, um, that the developer will do Y. Uh, that's kind of how I view it.
It's it's in the MDA. We have it in writing. It's more of when are we going to press for it? And to be fair, I I don't think Nate's holding it up as much as us trying to figure out where the heck it should go. But um, but you know, I I guess my feeling is, I'll let Jan make the call, but my feeling is it it sits, it sits in, it's sits in a piece of work between Jan and Thomas.
That's fine. I I agree with Jonathan as well, though, you know, that the commitment should probably reside in the MBI and MDA of the appropriate area that it's going to go in.
And that's fine. It's already in the MDA for Deer Springs, that there's going to be a sign. Chuck, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, Thomas, if you remember differently, but but nobody's, nobody's making it happen. Who's supposed to make it happen? Are we as a committee making it happen? Who is the who's facilitating slash enabling slash assuring slash, you know, what what? Cause if nobody, if 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 a person or a committee doesn't take it on, it probably won't happen. It'll just be a promise that was never fulfilled.
Uh, I'm happy to take it on. I can do it in conjunction with the planning commission and the MDA. I'm more than happy to take that on because you think that's where it'll end up living. Okay.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks, Thomas. So it's just a town town planner that's taking it on, not a committee per se. Tom, is that what you're saying?
I'm happy to do that, but also.
Thank you, thank you. Cause it's been kind of gnawing at me ever since Jerry left. Cause he asked me to pro, he pro, he said, will you please? Please promise that you will follow up on the sign. And I know it's been a few years and it's just, you know, keeping me up at night.
Back in with this project down at Salzman, it really became an opportunity to kind of, you know, as as Ralph said, bookend the town. And so it's in the staff report for discussion for the planning commission next week.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Thomas, DRC, anything to talk about?
No updates.
Okay. Post, anything to talk about?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so just to recap, um, on May second, the post committee was awarded a Utah Outdoor Recreation Grant of, I think it was seventeen thousand dollars. Nancy O'Toole wrote the grant for us. So that's to build a new trail at Ross Creek, partnering with Jordanell State Park. And also do some trail maintenance and some erosion control there. And then, um, on June twenty twentieth, there was, um, Kathleen at St. Gordon uh, miner, who was our new engineer, some background on the Ross Creek project, so he can kind of get up to speed. On the twenty sixth, there was a walk-through site visit. And this is in June, so not that long ago, uh, at Ross Creek where the, I I wasn't able to attend, but Kathleen uh, and John Hopkins were there as well as, um, park, the park, um, Matt, I think the park manager was there, but the representative is from the park. Um, walked, did a walkthrough to try to flag the trail where they wanted to put the new trail. And then a day later, we, um, the, um, project was a, uh, hideout was awarded a seventeen thousand dollar tap tax grant. Kathleen Hopkins wrote that grant applications. And so we have now achieved, um, original funding plus an extra award to pay for our cash match. So fantastic shape for this Ross Creek project. So we do have a little bit of a a challenge because Jason Whitaker, uh, is leaving his position as a park manager at Jordanell State Park because he got a promotion to patrol captain of the Division of Outdoor Recreation. So he's leaving the park, uh, as of July twentieth, he's taking on his new role. Um, so I think we're, we're going to be, they're, they're currently having a, um, uh, they have applications in progress for a new park manager. Meantime, we're going to work with some, uh, the assistant park manager, as well as some other designates that Jason's going to tell us about to try to figure out how we're going to get this trail construction and erosion control and trail maintenance going this summer. So it's a little bit of challenging because we're losing a key resource and that's Jason, but um, we're going to try to figure out how to, you know, get get some legs on this because this grant money, you know, it's not forever. We have a time limit on when we can, we need to get the project completed in order to be able to claim um, the reimbursement from the grant money. Um, so that's where we're at. Uh, our our real focus on the post committee is is this new project that we've gotten funding for. So we're going to be focusing on that this summer and, um, it's the fall. We do have an intent at some point in the future to go to claim and do a um, to try to map out a trail network because claim, that's part of the MDA with claim that, uh, they will construct or pay for the construction of a trail network that is yet undefined in claim. Thomas or Jan, is there anything else you can think of that we that we may have co- covered with Kathleen and and the team that I missed?
I don't think so.
Thanks, Thomas. Well, yeah, we get to do the thing we like, right? Boots on the ground, you know, get our hands dirty out, out in the state park. Now, we pursued this state park, uh, project because it was, you know, the lowest hanging fruit to actually deliver something. But we really, really want to talk about a spine trail and getting that, some legs on that. But that's a lot harder because we need to work with UDOT and frankly, we, I don't think we've made any progress yet on that. Thomas, unless you have different information, we haven't really gotten any traction there yet.
Not a lot of traction. We're coordinating with them on a couple of other things and that's a part of it, but not a lot of commitment or traction, no.
Right. And we're such a small committee, right? We can only handle so much. Now that we have money for an actual project where people can get their hands dirty, we're going to have to execute on that. And so that's going to be our primary focus for a while.
I want to congratulate Chris because this is, um, a collaborative effort and it panned out. Um, it's, it's the way we get funding from the state and, um, congratulations, this is a big win.
Oh, well, thanks. I wish I could say I did anything, but it was Nancy O'Toole, Kathleen, um, you know, the fact that we uh, we, Jan, you've been, uh, you know, in touch with, uh, Jason at the state park. It was, you know, a bunch of people who decided this was important enough to pursue and then put the effort, uh, to do it, which is honestly how anything gets done. So we're, I'm just grateful that we've got people that are passionate enough to give their time and energy to it and that's, that's how we're able to make some progress. So thank you. Thank you very much, Jan. Appreciate that.
Okay. Great, great progress. All these teams are making great progress. I mean, where we were, so it's really good to see that. We're, we're, we've learned enough to go tap resources and figure out economic analysis and get funding. I mean, this is this is leaps and bounds from when we started down this path of trying to figure out what what does a town do. So, good job all. Uh, Carol, you are, uh, on the last lap here. Any thoughts for us on the transportation side?
Um, I did contact Carol Custerly and she sent out a blast to all the town members about, um, bus service on the fourth of July. And they, the town really upped it. Um, the buses ran between every ten and twenty minutes all day. So, and we informed all the residents of the town that that was happening. And then I just heard on the radio that, um, Park City is extremely pleased with the usage of Richardson Flat, that more and more people are using that and taking the buses. So perhaps there will be, um, more service there. So, but I still haven't had any contact at all with, um, the other bus service with Carolyn Rodriguez. So, Chris, you have a question?
I just, yeah, Carol, you know, we know what the it's State of Utah Supreme Court ruled, you know, hideout actually won, right? With the Richardson Flat annexation and I, I know there's some dust that needs to settle, but I mean, this could have pretty big implications for a hideout in the future for transportation and transit. It, you know, with the annexation of Richardson Flat. So, um, I feel like you'll may have a lot more to do, you know, once we're able to get some traction on that.
Right. But we don't. Oh, what is that? Okay, I don't know what's going on.
We can still hear you, Carol.
Oh, okay. Um, I don't think, we're not annexing the actual parking lot.
No, but right next to the parking lot.
Right next to it, right?
Yeah.
So, but I mean, we, that's down the road, so.
Well, then, you know, hideout, part of the incorporated area of hideout is literally right next to the parking lot. So, um, you know, suddenly we're next to a transit hub instead of being far away from a transit hub or, you know, having buses pass through and only stop, uh, in one spot here where um, it it, some, some people can ride the the transit, but most people don't. They're still, you know, in their individual cars, driving wherever. I feel like it, it, um, and also the when the Deer Valley Expansion does open and there is a lot more activity along Jordanell Parkway, which is you know, hideout is right there too. It goes right through hideout for a little small section. Um, where we might, you know, just have more transit concerns and needs uh, at that point that we, than we already have now.
Right. I I do know that they are considering updating and enlarging the Old Town Transit Center. So I don't know if that is where all their money is going to be going, but I do know that that's on the drawing board for Park City. And so they may be focusing on that.
The other question, Carol, is I know that there is going to be a parking garage. Uh, or at least I read that there would be a parking garage at the Canyons. There'd be under construction, which is going to definitely impact the ability for Dave skiers to park, to drive their cars and park there. Is there any more, any plans for transit to run to that um, resorts, you know, area and not just, when I say just, not only to Park City Mountain Resort's main base area and Deer Valley's main base area, but also the Canyon's main base area. Cause I think, um, with the disruption that could cause, uh, there are a lot of people that park there and the fact that, you know, the parking garage going in and then more fewer spaces resulting than they currently have now. Um, i- is there any transit plans for the?
They do have transit that goes, um, around the seven eleven that's there. I know that.
Well, it doesn't go from Richardson Flat.
Oh, no. Oh, I see what you're saying. Is there?
I mean, for hideout, we're thinking if anybody here that wants to go to the canyon. Right, that wants to get to the other, we'll call it the third, um, base area that currently transit, you can't get there directly on transit, so nobody's going to take transit to go there currently.
Right. So, okay, it's something to look into, Chris.
Somebody look into because it's a concern, definitely a concern, because I say, I would say a lot of people park there because it's free now. You don't have to have a reservation for Park City Mountain. Um, and so it's actually feels quite impactful and it could be very impactful for hideout residents or visitors here who are day skiers.
Right. Okay, I'll I'll keep, keep track of it.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Thanks, thank you, Carol. Thank you, Chris. That brings us. That brings us to the end of our, uh, scheduled public session. Um, my understanding that, um, we do have a need for a brief exec uh, due to, uh, the possibility of reasonable pending or reasonably imminent litigation, personnel matters, deployment of security, personnel devices or systems and or sale acquisition of real property. So, um, volume, my, did I get that right?
Yes. So now you need a vote to go into close. Yeah. You got all that, but that sounds, I think you got it.
Okay. So as a result, I need to, a motion to close the public portion of the meeting and move to executive session.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Mayor May, you will need to send me another link to Zoom.
Same exact.
Back on.
Same link I sent you.
Right. But okay, I'll try it. But if, if I don't come on, you may need to resend it because something's going on with my computer.
It's going to take me a couple of minutes because I have to leave the meeting room and move to my office. So, but let's get the motion done. So who, who made the motion? I'm sorry. I heard a couple of different voices.
Here's Bob.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. Can I use a second?
Second.
I have Jonathan on that.
Right.
All right. So, uh, Ralph.
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So it's, uh, eight 54 on my clock. Um, I need probably three minutes or so to get upstairs and reconnect it. So let's say, uh, that's, so call it eight 58.
And we can use the exact same link we used to access this meeting?
Yeah. All, all we do is I, I log in under my ID as opposed to Alicia's. That's all. Okay. So thank you everyone. And I can figure out how to stop sharing. I will and read the meeting and we'll.